Good evening, I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is a regular meeting of the Select Board for January 5th, 2021. This meeting is all meetings during the health emergency is being held remotely using the Zoom Meeting Platform and it is being recorded. The quorum of the Select Board is participating from their respective remote locations. At this time, I'd like to move that we adjourn to Executive Session for the purpose of litigation and collective bargaining and negotiations, litigation in the matter of Miriam Karimi versus the Town of Brookline, and collective bargaining for the purpose of discussing strategy related to collective bargaining with the fire union. And I declare that the reason for the Executive Session is that an open public meeting would have a detrimental effect on both the litigation strategy and the negotiations position of the town. So, all in favor? Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Ben Skoye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will return to open session at the end of our Executive Session. So, Devin, close the door.
At this time, I'm gonna request that our friends at BIG put the recording on pause and leave.
Good evening, I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for January 5th, 2021. A new year, hopefully a new era soon. This meeting is all meetings during the health emergency is being remotely held using a Zoom Meeting Platform, and it is being recorded. Quorum of the Select Board is participating from their respective locations. And in addition, as I said, this meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be a public record. So if you don't want to be recorded and your recording be a public record, to turn your camera off, and if you want, you can rename yourself. So with that, let's go to announcements and updates. Any announcements or updates from the Select Board first? Mr. Fernandez?
Sure, everybody, good evening. Just wanted to give you an update that this week, the Task Force to Reimagine Policing in Brookline, we usually meet on Friday mornings from 8:00 to 10:00. This week, we're meeting on Thursday morning from 8:00 to 10:00. I want to encourage you to join us. We're actually, among other things, going to be looking at some of the early data relative to the policing survey. Some of you may remember that we had a survey that was mailed out in partnership with Tufts University, about 25,000 residents in Brookline. We have some analysis on that data that we'll be presenting at that meeting, so I encourage you to tune in and see that. I'll also note that one of our subcommittees, the one, the Subcommittee on Vulnerable People and People in Crisis, is going to meet at 6 o'clock that night. The reason I mention that is because they're going to be interviewing Tim Black from the Cahoots Program. You may have heard about that program, pretty nationally known, where they have essentially non-police personnel responding to issues related to mental health and other similar issues. And so, this is our opportunity to hear from someone from that program and to learn more about that approach and how it might inform our own approach here in Brookline. So, just want to say, we're back, we're meeting, we're doing the work, and we encourage you to come check us out. All the information on these meetings, as with all of our meetings, is on the Brookline Calendar. Please check us out. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments, updates? Okay, Mr. Clarkner, I understand you, oh, Mr. Ben Skoye. You gotta be fast.
Well, I was trying to give others a chance, but... So I wanted to say that the Boylston Street Corridor Study Committee is also back in business, having a meeting tomorrow noon. And the public is encouraged to attend, especially the public that have us, that, you know, are stakeholders in this Boylston Street Corridor area, which is the area from High Street to Brinkton Road on Boylston Street. So, just as my colleague, Mr. Fernandez, said, check the calendar on the town website for that, for the details on how to be a part of that. And also check out the Boylston Street Corridor Study Committee portion of the town website for a ton of information about what we've been up to and what we hope to accomplish. Second thing I wanted to say is that people need to, if they haven't already registered, the fact that we're experiencing what I'm gonna call a real spike in COVID cases in Brookline, then they need to be made aware of that. And no less a person than Governor Baker has put out, as of today, a bit of a warning to people that the variant that you may have heard of is probably already in Massachusetts. And this is this COVID variant that is even more transmittable than the well-known COVID. And as a result, can contribute to an even greater spread and a faster spread. And we're already in the midst of a significant spike in the spread. So, I hope everybody is keeping all of those things in mind and staying safe and following all of the directives of our Public Health Director, Dr. Jett. And final thing I want to say is a shout out to our State Rep Tommy Vitolo, who, Heather's smiling, and that's because she knows what I'm about to say. He gave his maiden speech, believe it or not, in his second term as a legislator. He hadn't yet had his maiden speech from the floor of the House. He gave it yesterday. It couldn't have been better time, couldn't have been a better message, couldn't have been better delivered. And the gist of it is that he spoke just before the House passed this very, very significant climate legislation, which we are now sort of urging Governor Baker to sign. And this, people will be hearing much more about this in the days ahead, so I won't go into too much detail. But this climate legislation is not only really significant for Brookline, because I think it, I think we will find out that it accomplishes in large part what we have been struggling to accomplish last year through Article 21, and then this year through our work on zoning reforms. But it will also make real the dream, the goal that Brookline had from the very start in all of this, which is to take one town's example and spread it to the entire state. And so, as a result of the efforts at Brookline and some other communities, we're now facing the possibility, the strong possibility, and again, Governor Baker, please sign that legislation, that we will have accomplished statewide what we barely dreamed possible even at the municipal level, just a year ago. And that is through the building code, setting an achievable goal of a future building being electric and not gas. And so, congratulations to Tommy Vitolo. He had a huge hand in that success. And then he delivered a terrific speech yesterday and deserves to be congratulated today for the success of those efforts.
Okay, Mr. Clarkner, you have something you want to announce?
Yes, I have two quick updates. The first relates to COVID-19 and the vaccination program. So, as you know, there's been a lot in the news about rolling out a vaccine, COVID vaccine, in our country and in Massachusetts. And today, I want to talk a little bit about how things may be rolling out statewide, as well as, you know, what role the Town of Brookline may have. Devin, could you share that graphic that I gave to you earlier? So, you see that the state has a three-phase program for rollout of the vaccine. Phase one, we're in currently, and I think you all know that clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers were first, and now we're moving into long-term care facilities. And then the next one, which is important, of course, for us, is our first responders, EMS, fire police, and public safety dispatchers. And I'll talk about that in just a moment. And then we have some other healthcare workers. And in phase two, we're going to start seeing more of a general population, beginning with elderly folks and people in the schools and in other public-facing places. Then phase three is the vaccine to the general public. And you see the timeframes in months associated with those. And this is taken right from the state's website, and they'll be updating this as changes happen. So, okay, Devin, that's fine. Thank you for that. I do want to mention that we have the opportunity, and we have taken the opportunity to be authorized to actually give vaccines for our first responders. And so, we have been approved and are in the process of receiving 400 doses of the vaccine that we will inoculate our first responders, Brookline's first responders, with next week. And we're very excited about that and proud of that. And the other part of that is that we don't know what our role will be in phase two and phase three as a municipality. I personally cannot foresee a situation where we have a very aggressive rollout of our vaccine without local governments and our local health agencies being involved. So, I fully expect that we will be involved. We just don't know how much. But I do think that this vaccine that we're gonna implement next week with our first responders is a great test for us. We're gonna test out, you know, how we, you know, freeze the vaccine and how, you know, how we do that. Because we do believe that we'll have a major role in the rollout of the vaccine in this country. But I will say, as of today, and I did participate in a briefing with the Lieutenant Governor today, there are no specific plans for how that will happen yet. And they're working hard at that, but I did want to mention that. I will, if there's any comments or questions about that, I'll just pause briefly.
And my comment is that I urge everyone to go to the state webpage. It has a huge amount of information. You have plenty of links to pretty much anything and everything you'd want to know about COVID, about COVID and process of rolling out vaccinations, who gets it, et cetera. The other thing, I hope that our town alert system, you know, keeps people up to date on, you know, rollout here in Brookline. I'm getting a couple calls from people concerned about, you know, what's gonna happen here in Brookline. Nothing in the media, and, you know, no one knows. Ms. Heller?
One concern, worry that I have is that we probably have enough nursing staff and physician staff and others trained to give vaccines to accommodate our first responders. But if, as you say, we aren't gonna be involved in the future effort, then do we have enough and how are we gonna get more? And one of the ways, I think, we could do that is start to compile some sort, and we must have some database of people in the community who are trained medically and would be willing to volunteer their time. I know that there are people who would be. So I think it behooves us to kind of start to think about that issue and collect that information or make a different plan. But I think we're gonna, we're gonna need one. It's not gonna be enough for just, even if you're recruiting the school nurses and that health department personnel, people who are trained to give vaccines, into this, I just don't think it's gonna, it would be enough. So, I would like to see us move toward a plan about that. And I think, you know, having volunteers, nurses and doctors and others in the community who regularly do this for a living would be perfect, and they may well volunteer for, you know, a two-hour slot at some point and more.
Thank you, Nancy. I do believe that effort is underway. We do have a team of medical professionals. I think we call it the Medical Reserve Corps. But we need to do a lot more, you know. We've done a lot of flu vaccinations and flu clinics in our time, but never in a pandemic when all of our workers are really focused on testing and contact tracing. So, it's a big challenge. I think we're up for it. And, but, you know, we need some time to prepare, and that's what we're telling the Lieutenant Governor and administration today is, please, let us know when you, you know, you have some further plans in phase two and three. Unless there is any other questions, my second update is on the budget. You know, we put together a budget, finalized a budget in February. You were well aware of the BFAC, the Brookline Financial Advisory Committee Report, which strongly advocates for education and further input, community-based input and education on the budget. And although COVID has really put a, you know, change in our plans, I do intend to convene a, what I'll call a mini-budget summit this year. I'm right now tentatively planning for a week from Thursday. I believe that's January 14th. This would be an educational forum, but also an opportunity to get some initial public input on the budget, give a little flavor of what we're looking for at Fiscal 22 in particular. This would not preclude the Select Board or the Advisory Committee to do their own sort of public hearings and inputs. In fact, I know you will do that. We hold a lot of public hearings around the budget. But this is, this is really in direct response to the BFAC report and recommendation, and I'm actually eager to do it. I think, you know, as I, as town meeting gets more and more involved in the budget and trying to address priorities of the town, I think we all need to understand how it works and, you know, what kind of constraints there are in the budget and what you can do, what you can't do, and all that. So, I'm looking forward to doing that. And tomorrow, you'll be starting to see a lot of communication around that budget summit that I plan on doing on the 14th.
Okay.
If I may, I would just say, it might be helpful, I don't know if in advance of this, or maybe as a result of the questions that come up at this meeting, to develop a series of FAQs. I imagine we're gonna get a lot of the same questions over time about how the budget works, and maybe to develop a set of FAQs that we can post on the website and direct folks to when they, when they do ask those questions.
Right ahead here. Thanks. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Unless anyone has any additional announcements, we'll move on to public comment. I understand we have a few people waiting to speak. Ms. Fields?
Yeah. At this time, we have three people signed up for public comment. The first person is John Harris. John, you've been promoted to a panelist, and you can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Yep, here comes my video. Okay, let me get down to my remarks there. Okay, thank you. John, my name is John Harris. I'm a town meeting member, Precinct 8, and co-chair of Climate Action Brookline, although speaking privately. And what I will be speaking about is the Collins Center Report. I know it's coming later in the evening, but it just doesn't list the agenda as including public comments. So, I hope you don't mind a few remarks right now. I urge you to endorse the Collins Center Report. It is a very well-researched and thoughtful analysis of where Brookline is at regarding the climate crisis, and it includes thoughtful recommendations to help us move forward. I have a few comments in particular on recommendation number four, which deals with the working teams, because that is the only recommendation that deals with direct resident input into Brookline's climate response. The report says, quote, "Working teams should be supported and fully utilized to engage staff, department heads, senior management, resident volunteers, and experts." I agree wholeheartedly. Following the Sustainability Summit in June 2019, nine working teams were established. Over 90 people, including 24 staff people, enthusiastically signed up to join various working teams. All had an expectation that the working team structure would be how Brookline would move forward. And since that time, some teams have had great success. The Renewable Energy and Brookline Green Electricity Teams advised town staff on technical matters regarding electricity generation for upcoming contracts. The very successful Warrant Article 31 on Transportation Philosophy at the November 2019 town meeting was developed through the transportation working team. And the composting team led to a commitment to set up a uniform composting program in all of Brookline schools. Some teams, however, met without making much progress, and there were complaints that other teams never met. Some felt and still feel that nine teams were too many for one person, the Sustainability Director, to handle. The bottom line from a residential point of view, though, is that each of those 90 people left the Sustainability Summit encouraged that Brookline would move forward on climate matters sensibly through topic-centered fora, the working teams, where staff and residents could work together and through which everyone involved would develop increasing expertise and efficiency in dealing with the subject at hand. So, two recommendations. First, that each working team have two co-chairs, one a staff person, but the second co-chair a resident. This would allow the new Sustainability Director to establish and work on his or her priorities based on professional and you could say, objective criteria.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. But in areas of resident enthusiasm, it would often be the resident co-chair who would take a leadership role in moving certain projects to completion. Number two, that fairly soon after beginning work for the town, that the new Sustainability Director convene a meeting of each working team, one by one. This would be an excellent way for the director to introduce him or herself to people in town, to get to know people in town, to hear directly from concerned residents their priorities. It would also be an excellent way for everyone involved to get a sense which issues have the most resonance. If, thank you, I'm concluding, if at the first meeting of any particular team, there is poor attendance or low energy, this would be a clear sign that that topic is not a high priority, and that working team can basically go get into abeyance. So, thank you. That's, I had a little bit more, but I've run out of my time and made my point. Thank you.
Next person.
You can send your comments to us if you'd like.
Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is, oh, he just left. So I will check the attendee list, and it looks like the next person is Danelle O'Neil. Danelle, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I'm gonna turn my video off. I just want to comment on three things. Sanctuary Medicinals, the report from Lieutenant Colin Hain is not a valid report. Not seeing the video, the timestamps, not being on the photographs. Part of our host community agreement, part of state law, is all timestamps need to be provided on documents. So, the report that Colin Hain presented is invalid. The last Select Board meeting, I requested for Lieutenant Colin Hain to be relieved of his duty as a cannabis liaison. And I want to make it clear that I have always had a great relationship with Paul, Lieutenant Colin Hain. Actually, whenever we'd see each other, he'd give me a hug. You know what I mean? So we've, I have a good relationship with him, and I, you know, and I'm really just trying to do what's best for the town. We had a special town meeting in regards to cannabis regulations and the whole nine. And out of that town meeting, I'm pretty sure we decided to look for, to hire an ombudsman, which would fill the role in the cannabis world for our cannabis establishments as a true liaison. I spoke with Dan O'Leary the other day, and he explained that Lieutenant Colin Hain is not just a liaison in regards to cannabis, but he's a liaison for a few other things. So maybe cannabis is just too much for him at this moment. So, my request still remains. I just think it's too much for him right now, and he's not reporting fully, truthfully. And, I mean, that's the only, only thing I can think of reasonable to ask for. It's just relieving of his duties there. Let's hire the ombudsman to take over that, those duties. Okay. So even down to the last statement on the report where he goes, "It appears security staff failed to follow policy outlined in business plan. The security staff actually spoke to the boots-on-the-ground David Kimmel, and who failed to report the situation." And it's another thing, sanctuary security logs are not being fully reported. And our host community agreement is a real thing. We need to really start abiding by it, or we're gonna be in a lot of trouble. And, thank you, Devin. I'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up for public comment is Addie Agnasi. You have been promoted to a panelist, and you can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable. It looks like they don't have a stable internet connection and keep getting bumped out of the meeting. But at this time, that was the conclusion of the public comment.
Okay, thank you. Let me just say to Mr. Agnasi that you can submit a written statement to the Select Board. Okay, next, question of approving the meeting minutes from December 22nd, 2020. Anyone have any edits or comments? If not, I'm of approval of the December 22nd Select Board Minutes. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Ben Skoye?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Hey, next, I'd like to take in omnibus fashion, items 7C through 7H. Did I got that right, Devin?
Yes.
I know we've had a couple new agendas, but... So those items relate to donation of $3,000 from a yoga foundation to the General Fund, Police Fund, and Fire Department. Relates to Brookline Reservoir Improvements, accepting payment from MWRA for $212,720 for the repair of the reservoir that was damaged with the water leak. And then, an extra work order related to that for the same amount to repair the damages caused by the water leak. Those are two items. Then, we also have a donation in the amount of $750 for the Asian American Families Family Network's essay contest. And we thank PK Crossley of Brookline Frames, Brava Gune. I think DMD means a doctor dental, dentistry? Okay. And I go to dentist so often, I should know that. And then from Frederick Talk of Golden Temple, we appreciate those donations for this worthy project. Next, a grant from the Brookline Community Foundation to the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, in the amount of $4,000 to facilitate a dialogue on racism, inequities, and engagement in Brookline. We also have awarding of a major contract. We've been through this contract in the past, and I'm sure everyone has gone through the voluminous materials in our packet. This is for the Lars Anderson Lagoon Structures project in the amount of $1,946,100. And finally, we're voting to authorize the hiring of Assistant Civil Engineer in the Engineering and Transportation Division of the Department of Public Works. We've all had an opportunity to go through the very voluminous materials in our packet related to these. So I'd like to take this in omnibus fashion and call for, yes, Ms. Hamilton?
I'll just point out that the civil engineer position is a backfill for someone who left, so it is not a new position.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's an important point. Thank you. So I move approval of all the items seven C through seven H. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Can I, I'm sorry, I missed. I think it's seven G, isn't it? Could be a separate.
No, seven C starts with the S P.
Seven C to seven G.
Right, okay. Well, no, H is engineering.
No, no, you're looking at an earlier.
Devin, have you allowed me to see an earlier agenda again?
Yes, yes, you are. H is the question of authorizing Jonathan to sign on our.
Right, okay, got it, got it, got it, yeah.
Seven G.
No, I took out the first item and didn't adjust on the last item. So, okay, so on favor of seven C through seven G. Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Manscaya?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, this is a big discussion, Collins Center Sustainability Assessment.
Bernard, we have to do seven H.
Sorry, Nancy, I had directed Bernard that that could be part of the consent vote. Oh, I see, okay. I'm not sure why that needed to be separated out.
Okay, so I don't know if the rest of us knew about that, but I'm just concerned because I know that it's coming up in two days and we need to, we need to get it done tonight. The closing is coming up in two days.
I have an additional question. Did we do seven B?
My understanding was that seven B through seven H would be adopted in the consent calendar.
Okay, the seven B, the question of entering into a contract with Wendy Fortanero, I thought that was taken off.
Seven B is the trustees of the SIDA Foundation in three thousand dollars.
So the original seven B was taken off. Okay.
But we do have trustees sign on foundation donation to approve, right?
I, I think we're good. I think all we need to do is discuss, well, not discuss, but present and approve seven H, which is the durable power of attorney and we're good to go.
Okay.
Okay, is that a new item on the agenda? Devin?
No, this was published on last Thursday.
Okay, I don't see it in my agenda, so. Okay, so could someone read it so that we get it right, Ms. Hamilton?
I can read it. Question of executing a durable power of attorney, authorizing Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Council to do all things necessary with respect to the purchase of the properties situated at one twenty-four Fisher Avenue, one forty-six High Slope Road, AKA one twenty-nine Fisher Avenue, one ten Fisher Avenue and one fifty Fisher Avenue, Brookline, Norfolk County, Massachusetts. The quote-unquote property from Well Tower, TRS Goldco LLC and delegating authority to execute the durable power of attorney to the chair.
Thank you. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Manscaya?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, Collins Center Sustainability Assessment. Is that right? Okay, Mr. Clecker, you wanna present this?
No, this is not my agenda item, but I believe.
Right, okay. Do this.
Well, the board's Climate Action Committee, I believe, has initiated this.
Okay. Hey, Ms. Heller?
Okay, so the Climate Action Committee met before the holiday and had, previous to that designated a subcommittee to look at the Collins Center report and to make some detailed recommendations to us. The subcommittee did that and you have in your packet as number nine A. It's a one, it's a two-page response to each of the recommendations of the Collins Center report. And in general, we, the Climate Action Committee did endorse this report and let me read to you what, and to the public, what the Climate Action Committee said about it. "We find the report to be a well-conceived roadmap for moving our community forward to achieve our shared goals in confronting climate change as sustainability with some relatively minor exceptions. We urge adoption and implementation of the report's recommendations in their entirety." So I could go through the, this, I believe it's six recommendations and I don't know whether you plan to vote on these or whether you want to do it as a whole. But why don't I do that and tell you what the Climate Action Committee is recommending?
And also what the exceptions were that you mentioned?
With what?
The exceptions that you mentioned.
Yes, yes, I will. So the first recommendation is actually already been adopted by the town and that was to upgrade the position of Sustainability Coordinator to the Assistant Director of Sustainability Planning. With, with the fact that a new Sustainability Planning Division is created within the Planning and Community Development Department. So that has already been done by Mr. Clecker. The task of finding a, an Assistant Director for Sustainability Planning is underway. Resumes are being reviewed, interviews are ongoing and, you know, these processes always take longer than you want them to, but it is what it is. Number two is from the Collins Center is the highest priority should be assigned to the development of a strategic plan built upon the foundation of the Climate Action Plan. And this is one that the committee strongly agrees with. It's, in our words, this is job number one for the Assistant Director for Sustainability Planning. And it, it needs to integrate, the, the planning director will need to integrate a strategic plan to fall, to, to town staff so that, because this is going to rely on all departments to participate in the implementation of this. Number three is the, and this is where the Climate Action Committee had a bit of an issue. The Select Board Climate Action Committee should be reviewed and reorganized as technical advisory body to support the key strategy areas of the Climate Action Plan. And while the Climate Action Committee agrees, and we've been talking for some time about having a review of the functions of the Select Board Climate Action Committee, but, and, and have no problem with having technical people weigh in on this, but we, the, the committee as a whole also believes that the Select Board Climate Action Committee should continue to play a policy role and policy role to advise the Select Board, especially in a situation where the Select Board can't really have hearings, et cetera, and, and discuss in depth some of these various things that come before us because of the time constraints and all the things we are involved in. And I think it's important for us to have a committee that helps move the policies forward and, and has robust discussions with members of the community, et cetera, on those. So that's, that was number three. Number four, the working team should be fully supported and engage, and utilized to engage staff, department heads, senior management, volunteers and experts. We agree. I think there's some holdback here in the sense that we believe that the breadth of and, and number of the working teams last time have overpowered the system in a certain way. And so we think that the concept, the number, the composition and areas of interest should be reviewed by the assisting, by the new Assistant Director and appropriate town staff and figure out how we, how we can best use our time to focus and probably have fewer of those because they are time-consuming. It's not something that, you know, and our last director basically spent all of her time on them. And I don't think we have that luxury this time. We need to get our, our implementation plan of done. We need, and we need this person also to be working on things like grants, which are very important, especially in this very difficult financial time. So we need, there's, there's not gonna be, I don't think, and I, I think we have to make the expectation clear. There's not gonna be enough staff time to devote to nine or ten working teams. And I believe, is Kara in the audience? I believe she could make a comment on that one, maybe. Do you wanna do that now, Kara? Is she here?
Yes.
No. Can you promote her?
Yes. Good evening.
Hi. So we were just talking about the working teams, I'm sure you heard, and I thought you could give a little more meat to the bones here about the working teams and how they function.
Sure, so that, there's a couple of different reasons the working teams were formed. And there's a couple of different ways that they're functioning currently. So for example, the Brookline Green Electricity Team has a lot of volunteer effort. Not, not many of the volunteers have, you know, professional background in community electricity aggregation, but they certainly are very well-educated through different workshops and keeping themselves apprised of what's going on. And as a team, they are extremely active. We are meeting monthly, including with staff, myself, as well as with our energy broker consultant, and they're extremely effective in getting education materials out to the community, being at different community workshops that are happening online. And so that's one kind of example of a working team model. Another is intermittent. So you may remember that the solar panel contract that we went through last fall, previous to coming to the Select Board, I was staffing a working team with four or five, again, volunteers, but a couple of them did have some professional experience in that world. And as a result, we were able to negotiate very strongly with our set solar power, solar panel developer as a counterpoint before bringing that body of work to the Select Board. Once we got to that point, there wasn't a need for them to meet, certainly not as frequently. And so those are just two different examples of different working teams. Some can be, you know, community-based where there's interest and manpower to do it and where they're being very effective. And others can be almost strictly technical body where someone like myself doesn't have deep background in a specific technical topic and we meet for a short time, get something done and then move on. So those are just two examples.
Okay, Ms. Heller?
So thank you, Kara. So I think, you know, some of the teams have been very, have not really had much activity and I think we need to look at that whole issue. So the numbers three and four are ones that this Climate Action Committee believes needs some tweaking. Number five and number six, we agreed with those recommendations that there be a formal standing team of town staff, department heads and management designated and powered to drive a sustainable agenda. We agree with that. And number five, six was having human resources undertake a review of job descriptions across the organization to ensure that incentives and accountability for upholding sustainability values are included. So that basically means adding language to the various, you know, job descriptions, et cetera. So that's where the community, where the Climate Action Committee landed. My co-chair, Werner Lowy, is here and perhaps he wants to make a comment?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Nancy. I'd just like to add a couple of personal comments. You've, you've heard Nancy very clearly explain what the committee has said about this and the committee probably ninety-eight percent agrees with the, with the report and, and I think probably, I, I don't know, I agree ninety-seven or ninety-nine. I think we all really think it's a very good report and, and that, that virtually all the recommendations are good ones. It's a very dense report, though. I mean, there are several dozen specific recommendations. So I think there are a couple of areas that really need a little more thought. I'm not sure their kinds of, you know, the kinds of things you necessarily vote up or down on. They're more, this is sort of an evolving process. But, but let me just, as I say, give you some of my personal thoughts and stopping, starting at the top of the list, you know, I'd like to, you know, also emphasize how pleased we all are that Allison, the planning department and Kara have been moving quickly to fill the Assistant Director position. It's, it's very important that it's, it's moving along. The, the second recommendation I also completely agree with, which is the idea that we have to make our Climate Action Plan more strategic, that we, that we need to be a lot better at setting priorities. The, the, the third recommendation is, is about the Select Board Climate Action Committee itself. And, and first of all, I completely agree that it needs to be reorganized and reduced in size. Both of those are recommendations. The question of how, I mean, perhaps it should be as small as five people with a select board member, but there's no specific recommendation about its size and I think that's difficult to work through. But we also need to think more about its composition. And this relates to what Nancy said about, about policy versus being a technical advisory body. I, I really think that the report kind of, kind of creates a false dichotomy there when it says it needs to be one or the other. I, I think we can find the right people that can do both of those things. I actually think that most of the people that are on the committee right now have both those kinds of expertise. So again, I agree that it should continue to have a policy function, but I don't think that, that it needs to be exclusive one way or the other. With regard to the working teams, again, I think we all agree they should continue. The recommendations that they be staff-led, which I agree with. And I also agree with what John Harris from CABS said, which is that I think it'd be very helpful if they were co-led by a citizen member of the community. And again, that's, I don't think somebody has to be decided right now. It can be sort of an add-on, but I think that could be very helpful. The, the fifth major substantive recommendation is the idea of a standing team of high-level town staff, and I think that's a great idea and very important if this is gonna be successful. So to say in general, I think this is a great report. You know, it's just a coincidence that, that just today, the state legislature has passed a very ambitious state climate bill. And I think we're gonna start, that between that and nationally, we're gonna start seeing some, some real changes. And so I hope that you're endorsing this report will help us in, in, in Brookline continue to be one of the local leaders too. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Heller?
Well, I, I would just suggest that we vote to endorse the report with the caveat that we would continue to work on recommendations, numbers three and four, further refine those rather than accept them as the Collins Center had proposed. I think you know, those two areas I think need more more work, more definition. And you know, the Climate Action Committee itself has been, as Werner mentioned as well, we, we've looked, we've thought about reviewing our goals and our roles. And I think that we should continue, we should do that in a more expeditious fashion. And and the working team issue is one I think we need to put off until we have a, an Assistant Director of Sustainability because that person is gonna be responsible for these and we need to be able to. And we need to be able to understand that person's ability to, you know, get all the other things done that we need done and, and manage these working teams as well. So I think that one, probably we should just say that while we agree that we should have them working teams, that we hold off on a specific recommendation until we do have a director.
Okay, any discussion from the board? Actually, I'd like to start off with a question. I thought it was a very good report. Very informative, very observational about Brookline, its, its culture, its, you know, difficulties in this area, as well as implicitly other areas. One thing, one question I had, and I'm just reading my notes, because I read the report a while ago. Recommendation six, job descriptions across the organization to ensure that incentives and accountability for upholding sustainability values of the community are included. I guess I didn't find anywhere in there, what, what, what type of job description and changes would satisfy that recommendation? I mean, other than to just repeat these words, but, and what, what, what is it that you're, you're telling, you know, a newly hired, I don't know, who are we hiring? Yeah, that's not obvious.
Hiring a parks director, though, but I think they already have that in there.
That's obvious, what, you know, it's easy how to figure out, how to put sustainability issues in their, in their job description. But, you know, there are other town departments, I can't think of them offhand, maybe, you know, someone in the House Department. How would you, how would you include in their job description this recommendation?
I, I can respond generally to that. First of all, you know, I want to say that I fully support the recommendations in the Collins Report and encourage the Select Board to look carefully at the, the modification of the recommendation on the Climate Action Committee or that policy committee. But I, I do want to say that sustainability as a, as a major town priority, you, you'd be surprised at how many departments I think that it applies to. And I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you how it applies to, you know, the accounting department or something like that. But we are talking about sustainability with a lot of different departments in the budget or in the candidates that we're interviewing. You know, I would leave it up to HR, along with Allison and our new sustainability coordinator, to talk about, you know, what that really means for job descriptions. But if you don't have it in the job description or in the job advertisement, you're not going to be able to attract people who have that understanding of what sustainability means and how, how their department may fit into it. So we think it's a really important recommendation. I don't have all the details. The other point is, is that, you know, if they're in your job description, you're going to be evaluated based on those, on those skills or that commitment. So that's, that's what I would say to that.
Werner?
Yeah, I would just like to reinforce that. I mean, obviously, as Mel said, this is up to HR to really figure out the specifics and so on. But what I often like to do is compare climate change work and climate change issues with diversity issues. In a community like ours, there's something that everybody believes in. But, you know, there are only a small number of people for whom that's their, their, their major responsibility. But these things aren't going to get done unless, unless everybody is thinking about it and doing their share. And by including this in job descriptions is a way of, this is a, just like diversity issues, making sure that everybody's thinking about it and thinking about it as part of their job, even if their major focus is on other things.
One example I can think of, actually, and I don't actually know if it's in there. I haven't looked at this particular job description. But I know that we are hiring a town engineer. And believe it or not, you know, climate issues and sustainability issues end up in the lap of, in some of the things that the engineer is responsible for, like stormwater, for instance.
Yeah, no, that's an obvious case, yeah.
But that, but the, the words of, of, you know, I mean, I don't think until a few years ago that the person in the job even thought about it. Not that the rest of us did either, and I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm sure it's not in that job description, or it wasn't. So maybe it is now, and I hope it is. But that's an example, I think, of where, you know, we need to focus. Obviously, transportation is, it's the same thing. And DPW, how you do snow removal, is that, is that any relation to climate issues? And, you know, so, excuse me, there are a myriad of, I think, town departments that, as Mel said, get involved in sustainability and climate initiatives. And we need to make sure that their job descriptions reflect that.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Mr. Vence Skoyak?
If, if Mel Kuckler doesn't mind my asking this question, I, I would be interested in just getting your point of view, Mel, as to whether you might prefer the, that we wait until this, this person is hired to get their views on some of these recommendations of the Collins Center report, rather than already endorsing it and then finding out that we've, we've gone through a lot of trouble to hire somebody to be in charge of all of this for the town, and he actually maybe disagrees with a couple of the, the recommendations in the report.
No, I, I don't, John. I, I think that the, the board, as the chief elected policy board of the town, ought to establish these. And, you know, they may be tweaked, you're right, when, you know, when the person comes on board or, you know, things change, if the state law changes and, you know, it changes a little bit of the, the nature of it. But no, I, I think it's important that this board adopt it to, to establish that. This, this department position is not a policymaking position. So I think that's suitable for the board to, to make those calls.
Okay, thank, thank you for answering that question. I, I just wanted to weigh in that, you know, as, as a board member, voting on whether to endorse the Collins Center report. I, I know I'd feel a lot more comfortable if I could hear from him before I take that vote. And I do agree with the Climate Action Committee. You know, there are a couple of areas where I'm not sure, you know, I'm 100% on board with the, the Collins Center report. And so, you know, if I have an opinion, then if the Climate Action Committee has an opinion, I, I'd love to hear this individual's opinion, so that we're all on the same page when, when it comes to what parts of the Collins Center report to adopt and what, what parts to, to depart from. So, you know, I, I'm not sure how I'll vote, you know, right now on this, but I, I just want people to know, I, I think it's worth considering whether we, whether it makes any difference if we take this vote tonight. The urgency is unparalleled, which is, you know, that, that would sort of push you in the direction of voting as quickly as possible. But on the other hand, because it is so urgent, it's something you want to get right. And part of getting it right is making sure that the vote we take on this report will put us on a path towards accomplishment very quickly. We, we don't want to be on a path that, you know, spends a lot of time debating issues and working through process problems that then results in us, you know, letting a whole year go by without concrete steps being taken. And so I just feel strongly that this is an important vote that I want to get right. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
So what, I, I would suggest that what we do is we endorse recommendations, number one, to five and six, which are the ones that are pretty straightforward. I don't think, I mean, we've already done number one. Number two is, is, you know, making a strategic plan built on the foundation of the Climate Action Plan. Number five is a formal working group of the town, of staff. And number six is human resources. And defer action on numbers three and four until we can have a more solid recommendation from the Climate Action Committee and also from the Assistant Director for Sustainability Planning. Does that make sense?
Except that, you know, five is setting up a structure that's going to significantly impact the sustainability person. And they should have some say there.
On the other hand, on the other hand, you want that person to know, to come into the job knowing what their expectation is, which is to lead a staff group. And so, you know, that will be a piece of the job. I think it's important to have the concept there, at least. And it may not be that the appointments get made or the selection of which staff until you have that person on board, but I think the concept is the important thing.
Yeah, I guess I agree with John as respected that, on any rate. What are other people's thoughts?
You specified one, two, five and six? I just want, I'm sorry, I just want to be clear, one, two, five?
Yeah, one, two, five and six.
Yeah, okay, I, I'll, excuse me, I'll add that I, I would be comfortable with that, since I raised this question. One, two, five and six.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with one, two, six. But anyway, that's just one vote on this, Hamilton.
Um, I, I actually have two comments now. One, I, I think we're kind of overthinking this and maybe overcome. You could, you can always, you know, change course when things play out and they don't make any sense. And all the Sustainability Director has to do is come before us and explain why something isn't working and why we need to go in a different direction, right? But the other comment that I, I want, I originally wanted to say was, I, I still remember my interview with the Collins Center. And I was very impressed with the level of detail and the questions that they asked. So I was, I've been waiting for this report for a while. And I'm very pleased that, that it's finally, you know, a publicly available document and that we're acting on its recommendations.
Ms. Fernandez?
Thanks. Yeah, I, I would agree with Select Board Member Hamilton on this one. I, you know, even, I mean, I suppose we could debate number, number three, for instance, but I think the Climate Action Committee should also play a policy role as well as a technical role. I think there's, there's room for the development of the committee to, to play both roles. And I also don't see an issue with four as well. Anyway, I say all that to say, I'd be fine supporting this now. If whatever gets us to yes right now, so that we can move forward, is, is I think what we should be doing. You know, there's a real, there's a real, I think, need to move urgently on this and an opportunity to move urgently, getting ahead of steam at the state level, too. So let's get it done.
Okay, and I kind of agree with, with Mr. Vence Skoyak in terms of, and nothing else, the courtesy to, you know, ask this person's views before we sort of throw it in their face. But, you know, we, we can approve this subject with the understanding that, you know, we're going to seek the input and, you know, the, any changes suggested by, you know, the sustainability person, once they're on board. But I mean, it is, it is really a question of courtesy. We're asking someone to come into a position and then we've told them what, you know, ahead of time, you know, what we expect them to do. I mean, of course, that's what you do in general. But, you know, in, in an area where we really want that person to provide their, you know, technical expertise to developing, you know, our final program, I think it's a little different, but anyway. So here's what I'll do. I move approval of the six recommendations of the Collins Center with the understanding that once the climate, the sustainability person is on board, that, you know, that, that person will look at these recommendations and make appropriate suggestions. Is that okay with everyone? How about you, Mr. Vence Skoyak?
I would just raise the further issue that with the understanding that in the, the role of the Climate Action Committee, the Select Board Climate Action Committee would also include a policy role. I can say it, I mean, I, we have no problem with the, the technical part, but I think we want to make sure that, that the, the board is comfortable with that policy role.
Instead of the Select Board?
Pardon me?
Instead of the Select Board having the policymaking?
No, no, the Select Board would have the ultimate, as we do now.
So it's really just recommendations?
Correct, but, you know, we're not going to, if, if, if the policies can be examined and dissected and discussed and community input obtained more easily through the Climate Action Committee. And that's, I believe, what we should be doing.
Okay, I, I think it's assumed that any board or commission could, or is expected to make policy recommendations. But anyway, I'll accept that. How about you, Mr. Vence Skoyak, since you raised this issue?
You know, for the sake of not standing in the way of progress, I could go with the vote as proposed by you, Mr. Chair. At the same time, you know, I, I just want to point out to make specific why I have some concerns. If you look at number four, the working team should be supported and fully utilized to engage staff, department heads, senior management, resident volunteers and experts living in the community. I, I, at this point, until I'm better convinced of it, I, I'm just not sold on that, because I can see the, the downside of bringing someone in who's got a lot of expertise and has a very important mission and very important achievement goals. And then you say, oh, and by the way, you got to supervise all these working teams who we've sort of vaguely given an endorsement to them to engage staff and department heads. How many working teams are we going to, you know, send out there and say, you know, call on staff, call on department heads? And, and then you, you end up in a situation, which is kind of like the situation that we were in, I fear, you know, a year and a half ago, where you, you've got staff and department heads getting all kinds of calls from various folks on various volunteer working teams, and they don't know what they're supposed to do in response to those calls. And so I find that particular one to be very questionable and, and in need of review, especially reviewed by this incoming person. And so that, that, that one is my biggest hangup right now.
But if, if we vote approval on, on the understanding, and that will be part of the record, that the sustainability person will, you know, review these and, and make appropriate suggestions for, you know, adjustments. Wouldn't that address your concern?
Yeah, yeah, it, it would, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I move that again. And I'm not sure how, how to, to say Ms. Heller's additional understanding. What, what?
Well, reorganized as a technical advisory body to support the key strategy areas while retaining a role in policy development. How's that?
Okay, okay, with that understanding, which, which in my view is what any board and commission has authority to do. But, you know, okay, with those two understandings, number one, that the sustainability person will work on any changes, recommendations to the, to the document. And number two, that understanding that the, what is it? The Climate Action Committee will make recommendations, policy recommendations, yeah, to the Select Board. So, all in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Vence Skoyak?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, okay.
Thank you, Werner, thank you, Cara.
Yes, thank you, Werner, thank you, Cara.
Thank you all. We appreciate the support.
Next, Hebrew, I'm sorry, Hebrew Senior Life Project update. So presentation, who's going to do that?
Jennifer Gilbreath is here, and I think Rhonda Glynn from Hebrew Senior Life is also here.
Okay.
So they are going to make the presentation. And then I've developed the charge and the committees. the committee, so then we can discuss that after. Okay? And George Cole is here. I see him now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, um, Nancy and members of the board. I am Jennifer DePaso Gilbert, and I am so honored and privileged to be here tonight representing Hebrew Senior Life. Uh, Hebrew Senior Life has a, a concept for what we're calling your senior campus over on Center Street. We've been discussing it for quite some time, both internally and had several neighborhood meetings and numerous discussions with various stakeholders and other interested parties. I'm thrilled to be here tonight with, um, Rhonda Glyman, who is the Executive Director of Hebrew Senior Life and Center Communities of Brookline. She'll be making a brief presentation, um, along with George Cole from Leggett McCall, who is the Development Advisor. And for those of you that don't know, George Cole is a Brookline resident and has volunteered many, many years of his expertise and services to the Brookline Building Commission. Also here this evening from the Hebrew Senior Life team is Kim Brooks, the Chief Operating Officer for the Senior Living, and Deb Morris, Vice President of Real Estate. Unfortunately, Lou Wolf, the President and CEO, couldn't join us this evening, but he is very committed, um, to, to moving this forward, discussing it further with the committee, um, and has been also involved in various neighborhood meetings and presentations. So, uh, without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Rhonda and George to make a presentation, and then we're all available to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And good evening, uh, members of the Select Board, Mr. Kleckner, and members of the Brookline Community. I'm so happy to be here with you tonight to present an introduction to Hebrew Senior Life and Center Communities of Brookline, and very excited to share our vision for the campus, as it offers a unique opportunity to meet the needs of people across Brookline. Hebrew Senior Life was founded in nineteen oh three by a small group of Jewish community members who wanted care for their loved ones, and they didn't want them to be lonely. They went door to door and raised enough money by nineteen oh five to open a home in Dorchester for fifteen residents. Today, Hebrew Senior Life is a nonprofit, non-sectarian organization serving over three thousand people a day across six Boston-area campuses. Our mission is to honor our elders by respecting and promoting their independence, spiritual vigor, dignity, and choice, and by recognizing that they are a resource to be cherished. We welcome people of all faiths and backgrounds and feel a special responsibility for the fraillest and neediest members of our community. We are a national leader in the field of aging and the only senior care organization in the country affiliated with Harvard Medical School. Today, our research division, uh, conducts influential research locally, nationally, and internationally. We train over a thousand future geriatric care professionals across, each year across our locations, and about two hundred and fifty of them at Center Communities, including all Harvard Medical School students, so that they can learn about aging successfully in community. Here you can see our six Boston-area campuses, including CCB. And the CCB campus is comprised of our properties in Coolidge Corner, uh, the Cohen residences from one twelve through one twenty Center Street, up on the right side of the screen, and the Dinesh residences at one hundred Center Street in Coolidge Corner. And we also, um, include the Goldman residences located at fifteen fifty Beacon Street, just a block from Washington Square. Since we purchased CCB in two thousand and two, we've added many thoughtful services and have really focused uniquely as an organization on the integration of our high-quality healthcare and senior living services and making them available to everyone within our community. Everyone has access to these services, and we really focus on each individual resident. Our team knows each resident and works to, together to meet their individual needs. Um, but we don't stop there. We also work together to find out and ask residents what really matters most to them, what are their hopes and dreams and aspirations, and we support them in achieving those goals. Because we offer all of these services right within the communities, most of our residents are able to stay throughout their lives at CCB. We are one community with a diverse population. We have a significant commitment to affordability. And, um, just to, to keep it brief, as you can see, across all of our locations in Brookline, sixty-six percent of the apartments are affordable, and we, of course, are welcoming to all. Um, we are fortunate to be located in Coolidge Corner and have access to all of the amenities, the shops, and the restaurants, and the transportation, and the walkability, and just the amazing community that it is, and also feel very fortunate to be adjacent to the Brookline Senior Center. And, uh, that plays an important role in what I'll, I'll share with you in a moment. Um, we have been working with two life communities and the Brookline Senior Center for quite some time, and we have envisioned developing our existing footprint in Coolidge Corner into a dynamic, welcoming, and attractive senior hub, a mini neighborhood that, uh, would include, hopefully, an expanded and connected senior center, offering cultural arts, lifelong learning, and multi-generational programs that promote wellness, uh, in our vibrant neighborhood. We've worked collaborative, collaboratively with Ruth Ann Dobek and her team over many months and more intensely over the summer and fall of last year, and we envision, um, innovative ways to invigorate our services and to be able to enhance the quality of life in Brookline for people as they age. We've also envisioned new housing opportunities for seniors at different income and care levels. We understand that there is a great need in Brookline for both affordable and market-rate independent living, and, um, that, uh, the reasons are, um, not only that many people are obviously aging in community, but our neighbors don't want to have to move out of Brookline as they age, and Brookline kids want their parents to be close. So we're really looking at meeting the needs of as many people as possible. Here you see our existing conditions on Center Street. In the foreground, um, is part of our Dinesh one hundred Center Street residences. Beyond that, the Blue House is one oh eight Center Street, and beyond that is the Cohen Residence, as you can see the tower there. Um, until very recently, we have been looking, uh, pretty much uniquely at one oh eight Center Street where the, the blue houses that you see, and really trying to work to fit everything there. Um, we thought it was, it would be a simpler idea, and we worked to fit, uh, affordable and market-rate housing, independent living and assisted living, and the expanded senior center, and it kept getting bit bigger and bigger and more unwieldy, and it really was not something that we felt would be feasible for the small site, and especially for our budding neighbors on Winchester Street. So we decided to look at the overall campus. And what we are envisioning now, I'm happy to share with you, is the redevelopment of one oh eight Center Street into approximately forty-five senior, all affordable, independent living apartments, and the related common areas with the expansion of the Brookline Senior Center in cooperation with the town of Brookline. We also are looking at, further down at one twenty Center Street, which is at the corner of Fuller and Harvard Street, and George will share some maps with you so you can see more clearly where these buildings are located. And at one twenty Center Street, we envision, um, redeveloping the site to include eighty to one hundred, both, uh, market-rate assisted living and independent living apartments and common areas, and in addition, enhancements to the overall campus, uh, to make it a cohesive campus feeling, uh, including landscaping, lighting, and green space, and, and also to keep our neighborhood feeling, making it more of a, a destination that's, um, been intentionally, you know, planned and, and thought through to, to make it a very beautiful location. Also, to the greatest extent feasible, we will incorporate the highest standards of sustainability. Today, our current buildings that you saw, the Cohen residences and the Dinesh residences are twelve stories tall, and to be respectful of our neighbors, we've really thought about trying to, um, keep these, you know, not, as low as possible, not quite so high. So at one oh eight Center Street, we're envisioning a six-story building, and at one twenty, we're, um, we're planning for and, um, think that we would probably need to fit this number of apartments and services, nine to ten stories, um, at that location. And, uh, we really just want to make sure that everyone is able to benefit from the services that we offer. Our hope is that everyone ultimately will benefit, um, from the redevelopment. And we realize that this is very personal to our residents and our neighbors. To our residents, um, we do have people in twenty-six apartments at one twenty Center Street that if we're fortunate to move forward, we would, they would need to be relocated. And so we met with them over a month ago. We met with them actually first before we shared this vision with anyone else to, to let them know about our plans and why. And we told them that, um, all of them with subsidies would be able to keep their subsidies, that we will provide relocation assistance and cover reasonable moving expenses if and when the time comes, and that the earliest, the very earliest, if we are, you know, able to move through the town process efficiently and quickly, the very earliest they would need to move would be January of twenty twenty-three. And I was so relieved with their reaction. They understood, they saw the value in it, they supported the idea, and they said that they know that we'll take good care of them. So, um, I was thrilled with that. We've held many meetings since then, and, um, with our neighbors, um, especially, um, a, a very important sensitivity because of the nature of the building at one oh eight Center Street, we know that it is a very significant building, and we realize that any redevelopment at one oh eight would require building on the land on which the current vacant house sits. And so we talked with our neighbors, actually, a year ago last fall, we held neighborhood meetings and talked about possible ways to honor the Jameson Family Home and talked about, uh, keeping key elements that could be included in the new building or a photographic history display. Uh, and we really invite your ideas and any suggestions that you have. Um, we, we look forward to working with the town and the community to explore options and try to mitigate any impacts, uh, to the greatest extent possible. Um, our goal is really to honor our historic Center Street neighborhood and keep that neighborhood feeling as we go forward. So, uh, with that, I'd like to ask George Cole to please take us through the specifics of the, the existing massing.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing us to present this. Um, I have been, as you know, I've been involved with many projects in Brookline, and this one is really special and very exciting. Um, as you know, the site, uh, spans, um, along Center Street, uh, to the corner of Fuller Street, consisting of four buildings, Dinesh, one oh eight Center Street, which is the historic home, the Cone Tower, and the townhouses at one twenty Center Street at the corner of Fuller Street. Most importantly, this, their campus backs up to the Brookline Senior Center, which faces Winchester Street on a very constrained site. Next slide, please. And this is, this is a, a aerial photo. I'm sure most of you are very familiar with this area. Um, but the, um, the interesting thing is you have two very intensively developed sites at, um, one twelve and one hundred, the Dinesh and Cone Buildings, one oh eight and, uh, one twenty Center Street are less developed. And those are the sites we're looking at before completing this campus. And as you can see, the Brookline Senior Center is on a very tight site facing Winchester Street. Next, please. So this is the current lot configuration. These are non-conforming buildings. Current zoning is, uh, multifamily point two, um, FAR two, height limit of about forty-five feet, and we'll be seeking, um, new zoning for rezoning of the, of the campus to allow, uh, the development anticipated, and, and we're going to describe it further. Next, please. So what we're thinking about, and this is in the very early stages, and we look forward to the, you know, a complete process with the town, is a six-story building at one oh eight, um, Center Street. Um, in the base of that building would be an expanded Brookline Senior Center. Uh, the second floor, uh, one oh eight Center Street would align with the first floor of the Brookline, existing Brookline Senior Center on Winchester Street. Um, and it could be directly connected to the Brookline Senior Center. At one twenty Center Street at the corner of Center Street and Fuller Street, again, these are just diagrams, cartoons essentially, not buildings, would be a larger building housing assisted living and independent living for seniors. What's really special is we have the opportunity to look at the campus as a whole and really to create a senior hub here, not just two new buildings, um, block, you know, blocks on lots, but think about it comprehensively so that the whole becomes more than the sum of its parts. Next, please. And again, these, this shows, the, again, these are first rough sketches of, um, building footprints. But again, you can see the juxtaposition of one oh eight Center Street and the Brookline Senior Center and the ability, uh, to physically connect those two buildings if we're allowed to by the town. Next line, please. And this gives you, um, a bird's eye view of what, um, massing might look like. Again, we're gonna, we're committing to a full community process. We look forward to engaging the community. This will only get better with the involvement of the community, um, and we'll look to mitigate any impacts on the adjacent neighborhoods to the extent possible. Um, but again, because of the adjacency of Dinesh and Cone Buildings at twelve stories, we feel that these buildings could act as actually scaling devices between those buildings and the surrounding neighborhood, and make it this more of a hub and a place that seniors, um, from Coolidge Corner and from, throughout the town of Brookline and even outside the town of Brookline, get access for a variety of services and social interactions. And with that, I turn it back over to Jennifer and Rhonda to finish the presentation.
Thank you, George. Uh, we are very early in the process and just wanted to share that we do have contact information for those members of the community who would like to, um, reach out to us directly with any questions, uh, ideas, input, concerns that they may have, and it's on screen. Um, I'll just say it quickly one time for those who may be on the phone, and we'll say it slowly. Our voicemail phone number is six one seven three six three eight three nine two, or you can send a note to, I'll, I'll, this is all spelled out with no dots or dashes or spaces, and Center Street, Center is spelled C E N T R E. So, uh, the email is C C B Center Street Campus at H S L dot Harvard dot E D U. And I thank you so much for your kind attention. We'll turn this back over to Jennifer.
Well, thanks, everybody. Um, and thank you to the board. I, um, look forward to continuing the discussions with the town, um, about this really exciting proposal. Uh, Nancy, all yours.
Okay, um, can you take down the, uh, Rhonda's presentation? Okay, thanks. Yeah. Um, so you can see that, uh, what Center, what Hebrew Senior Life is proposing is a development, a senior development, um, along Center Street, and it would require, in order to do what they are proposing, or any version thereof, uh, a, uh, a zoning overlay essentially, um, uh, on Center Street. So, um, I have developed, uh, Jennifer's been a part of this, uh, Allison has been a part of this char- development of this charge. Um, and it's based, uh, largely on what we did at Newberry, which was, uh, successful and comprehensive, et cetera. So, um, the charge is, you have that in your packet, and, uh, we need to adopt that. I won't, uh, read the I won't read the whole thing unless anyone here has not had the opportunity to, and then I can do it. And also establishment of a committee to look at all the various issues that are laid out in the charge. The committee members are a varied group of people. They bring different skill sets. We have attorneys, we have a town meeting member from Precinct Nine, another resident of Precinct Nine of Center Street, both of whom live on Center Street. We have a few advisory committee members. We have an attorney who understands zoning, an architect, and another attorney who was formerly a member of HAB. So, and Neil Shinsky, who's in a class by himself. I mean, he's done so many of these that I don't need to recite his qualifications for you. But at any rate, I think it's a good committee, and we have senior activists here. We have other, another at-large advisory committee member. So we're spread out across the town from precinct, all the way from Precinct 14 to to precincts in in and around Center Street. So I think we should discuss the charge first. Is there anybody who wants to ask questions or propose modifications? Where did Bernard go?
I'm trying to pull up the charge on my computer. Anyone have any discussion?
Hey, y'all. Thank you for for this presentation. I actually attended one of the community meetings that you held. So some of this I was seeing for the second time, and it's even developed since then. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
The, you know, you know, we've done this before, and I trust that this committee is going to very intently be sort of looking at and working with you on issues like heightened massing and and all those kinds of issues. I'll say the thing that I'm going to be paying very close attention to, because I think there's a real opportunity here is around community benefits. So I like everything that you're saying about sort of connecting to and perhaps expanding the the Brookline Senior Center and providing amenities to seniors in the community who may not currently have access to those kinds of amenities, I think is a real opportunity. So I'll just say that that's something I'm going to be closely following throughout the process.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the comments. Yeah, following up on that, I'd like to sort of note that it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that your organization, you know, not only is nonsectarian, but also goes out of its way to ensure that there's, you know, some level of diversity among the residents, which I think is very important.
Very much.
And, you know, I appreciate that. And of course, you know, that'll be an issue that we'll be birdwatching you on, so.
Great. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vance Goyat.
Yes, and let me add my thanks for the presentations. Really excellent. I I note that there is a clear statement of deliverables, which I think is is very important, you know, in in any of the charges that we frame for committee work. And so I'm really glad to see that. What what do we think is the timetable for this, for the proposed zoning amendments? What 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 future town meeting do we think we're talking about?
Nancy, do you want to take that one?
Sure. You know, I think that May is unrealistic, given how much work is, needs to be done and developed. I think one of the reasons that our project on Fisher Hill was so successful at town meeting had to do with the fact that the great amount of detail that was provided to town meeting in terms of not only the architecture, but also the sustainability issues and the landscaping issues, et cetera. So I think if, you know, if we're going to get there, it should be probably the earliest is November of 2021. Now, I know that one of the ways, sorry about this, one of the ways that we that the Hebrew Senior Life plans to finance this is through tax credits. And that issue only comes up, is I understand it, once per year, October. So if it is put off until November, they would have the disadvantage of needing to wait another year. But there may be other ways around that. I think we should wait and see. No, it certainly wouldn't be May. It's just too soon. So what we will do is see how start going down the road, having the committee meetings, having the Hebrew Senior Life make presentations, having their, they've, as I understand it, they retain Architects Icon and Fine Gold Alexander. You'll recall, Fine Gold Alexander was also involved in the Fisher Hill project. And they focus, I think, on sustainability issues and in the architecture. So they've got two strong architectural firms. So I think we need to start reviewing the situation, holding community meetings. This, I want to assure anyone who's listening that at our meetings will be a public meeting, public meetings, the committee's meetings. And we will encourage participation by community members. I've already spoken with Allison about, Allison Steinfeld, our planning director, about developing a list of emails associated with the people who are interested so that we can notify them directly of our scheduled meetings. She's all, she's assigned Victor Pennack as the staff person to this committee, which is a good thing. Victor's got a lot of zoning chops. So that's basically the situation, I think. November 2021, to get down to your bottom line question, or beyond. But it would depend upon how quickly Hebrew Senior Life can gear up to get these other pieces, I think, in place.
So if I may ask one more question, and I think our chair has raised a good question, and I'd like to sort of add add a little bit more to that. Looking, looking at this, this very impressive list of individuals who will be part of the zoning committee, do we see a possibility that that list could could be added to at some point? And is it possible that we could, that that maybe right now we're short of, I'm, for lack of a better word, I'm going to say, you know, equity interest being represented on that, on that committee? You know, equity in terms of, look, you know, looking out for that question, which our chair has raised, as to what the ultimate, you know, demographics of the population of this expanded project will look like. So I'm going to ask that question without necessarily expecting a hard and fast answer.
I think that's a very good point, that, you know, all of our committees and commissions should have some diversity for that reason, but also, you know, just in general, bringing a different perspective and and, you know, different ideas and interest to the discussion. So so we don't need to answer that now, but I think that's something that should be looked at. I'm looking, looking at the list there, and, you know, give that some thought.
Yeah, I I should be more specific in case anybody wonders, you know, what does exactly does he mean by that? I mean, and this is a hypothetical, but there have been a couple of instances recently where we've made a point of having someone from Brookline Public Housing on, you know, this or that committee. And so I'm not aware, and maybe I just am not aware, but I'm looking at the names. I'm not sure I see anyone from public housing, but that's just a hypothetical and an example of what I'm talking about.
Yeah. I mean, there is.
I think that there's always a tension between wanting to keep the committee membership at a manageable level and including everyone who ever wants to be on the committee and who and including, you know, every single kind of interest ever, you know. But I do think that there is very good representation here of seniors. Rob Heist is from the Commission on Disabilities. He lives on Center Street. And Chuck Schwartz is also a Center Street resident, and he's from Precinct Nine. Carol Carroll has been involved in the focus groups of this project. So she has got a history with the development of the project. And I think that we've done, you know, it's it's not easy to get this kind of balance, and you need people who are skilled, for instance, at negotiation, because we're going to need a memorandum of agreement here. And you need architectural support. And we have that in Carlos. So, you know, to, it's like dancing on the head of a pin. It's not easy. But so I would prefer to keep the committee at a smaller number rather than a bigger number. You know, I have been involved in a couple of committees that have had 15, and it's really too many, you know, in my view. But we also need an odd number, so in case there's a, God forbid, there should be a tie or a vote, contentious vote, you know. I doubt it's going to happen, but so, you know. The one thing I didn't look to is any school committee members. I figure the residents and Hebrew Senior Life are not as involved in the schools as they are in other parts of Brookline. So at any rate, that's the reasoning behind this number and why we came up with the people we do.
Yeah, and I I add that you also include Bobby Nabel, who's a black elderly resident of Brookline for many, many, many years, who has contacts and connections, you know, throughout the area. I guess my my point in raising this was just to put it on the table that this is an issue that I hope people, you know, think about and 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 focus on as, you know, we go forward. And I'm sure it will be.
Thanks for one thing on that is, is one way to go about this too, whether it be for this committee or others, is to consider BHA board members. We've got the chair of the board that's going to be joining us in just a little bit for our BHA conversation. But that might be another way to have the interests of BHA residents represented on committees like this and to invite them to participate.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay. And you want to vote. There's a resolution. I didn't see it in the packet. Which doesn't mean anything, because apparently I don't get the right packets all the time.
It's a question of establishing and appointing a slate of candidates to a Center Street zoning committee. So it's a question of adopting the charge and thereby establishing the committee and establishing a committee by appointing these members and 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 tasking them with carrying out the charge.
Right, okay. So I move that we appoint the committee pursuant to the charge and appoint the individuals listed in the charge to the committee. Is that that good enough, Nancy? Yeah, okay. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vance Goyat?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you to Jennifer, George, and Rhonda.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Boards and Commissions interviews. First, Advisory Council on Public Health. We have Natalia Lino, who's appearing to be interviewed. Good evening, Ms. Lino. Please introduce yourself to the board and give us some explanation for why you want to be on the committee or on the Public Health Advisory Council and, you know, what you can offer.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Natalia Lino, and I live in Precinct Six. I'm a social epidemiologist in training, and I currently lead as Executive Director the Center for Health and Human Rights at Harvard. I have also have a longstanding career at the United Nations, where I led work on climate change and health and worked as science advisor to the New York City Health Commissioner. So I think in terms of my background, I have credentials, and more importantly, I want to serve during this time of true crisis for our country, for our, you know, for Brookline as well as the world. It feels that people with public health expertise should be stepping up. A lot of my priorities in the past have centered and continue to center on racial equity, and that has played out so dramatically during this COVID pandemic. Climate change also, and the intersection between public health and climate. So I'm excited to serve in any capacity that would be useful, and I hope that you will consider me on this Advisory Council. I'm happy to answer any questions about my experience as well as what I hope to bring.
Great. So give me some sense of how you would address your priority with respect to racial equity in Brookline. And I know Brookline is not an island. You know, we 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 are part of a metropolitan area, and there are no borders in terms of public health. But, you know, give me some sense of, you know, how you address those priorities and what issues.
As a social epidemiologist, I recognize that health is shaped by the conditions in which people live, their housing, the environmental conditions, their access to education. So it's really that social determinants of health approach that I bring. So ensuring that, for example, I'm engaged in conversations around access to affordable housing, that food insecurity, which has spiked, is, you know, is addressed. And right now, with COVID, obviously, access to testing, access to vaccines, those issues are top of mind. But I'm hoping that this will be a long-term commitment that I'll bring those other issues to bear.
Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you so, so much for the willingness to want to serve, and your background is just really perfect right now. One of the things that you bring to the table is the fact that you have kids in the schools right now. And, you know, everybody wants to get it right when it comes to children and learning. You know, how do you, what what are your thoughts right now with what we're doing, right? And maybe areas of improvement, especially when it comes to our children and the public schools?
Thank you so much for that question, and it's a difficult one. I do have a seven-year-old who is at Pierce. She's in second grade. She is a bright, really social seven-year-old who is there hybrid, you know, two days a week, and definitely misses the social aspect. She's also a struggling reader, and that has been a challenge to me as a parent, to not be able to count on kind of the day-to-day. So I understand from a parent perspective and from a child perspective, I believe that kids should be in school. But I also believe that kids can only be in school if the teachers feel safe, if the custodians, if the community feels safe. And I believe that our teachers don't feel safe, even if I might disagree on whether that is a real, you know, issue. I think that there are some issues, including ventilation. There's a lot that we can be doing. But I do believe that in order for our schools to be safe, they need to be prioritized. And so I would call on Governor Baker to close down restaurants. And I know a lot of people need, you know, to make an income, so there has to be a compensation. Like, I am one of those people who thinks that the only way to open schools safely is to lower the, you know, the the sort of the rates in our communities. And schools should come first for so many reasons, for the kids' educations, for parental well-being in terms of, you know, gender equality, women being pulled out of the workforce to take care of kids, for children with disabilities especially. So I think we're doing a lot right in the sense that there's conversations happening, but there's a lot of frustration. There's a lot of frustration among parents, among teachers who feel disrespected when they're trying so hard. So I think recognizing that it's nobody's fault, that this is really about a pandemic that has caught us off guard, but that there's a lot that we can do. I would urge, you know, vaccination of teachers as, you know, to build that trust and that confidence. I would urge, you know, there are now in tier two with the, you know, in in the prioritization. I know I know you went over it, but somehow to build that, that we care about, you know, teachers, but also everybody. You know, in hospitals, they vaccinated the clinicians, but also. In hospitals, they vaccinated the clinicians, but also, you know, people who were cleaning the beds. And so everybody who works in the schools, let's not forget about custodians and everybody else. Um, but my belief is that, you know, Brookline is known for its public education. That is why I moved here initially, you know, with my family. And we need to build that confidence in, in parents too, that, you know, we have had so many families leaving the public school and that is, you know, nobody's fault, but there is a lot of trust and relationship building and public health is the foundation. Um, and sorry, I've just rattled on for a very long time because I cared passionately about this. But it is, it is really, I do think that we've, we've done a lot of things right. I hope that for the younger kids, um, we will be able to get them back. But I'm not optimistic that it will happen before September of next year and I hope that by then we will have it right.
So, um, it looks like when, at least from your standpoint, we're not gonna be opening restaurants, um, until the fall of, uh, I mean, opening them on a, on a normal basis until the fall.
Schools mean our restaurants. I want to close the indoor dining and if there's anything you can do to close indoor dining.
Talking about the restaurants, uh, do you think that that timeline is impacted by, uh, presumably a more competent, um, rollout of, uh, the vaccines, um, beginning, uh, what is it? Thirteen days from now?
Yeah. I mean, I think there's a lot, a lot of optimism. Um, there's a lot of optimism, but we need to recognize that the vaccine isn't a silver bullet. The vaccine is a hu- huge, um, tool that we have and as long as people are willing to be vaccinated and, and this vaccine hesitancy is not the same as anti-vaxers. We need to recognize that. The vaccine hesitancy this time around is people just feeling nervous about the process and communities feeling that they haven't, you know, that they're being evicted. And so why would I listen to you to, you know, you, you're gonna vaccinate me? Is this the savior pill? Like there's a lot of, a lot that we need to do to build trust with communities. So the vaccine is not going to be our savior unless we invest in, um, you know, bas- basically everything that public health has told us in, in terms of the social determinants of health. So I'm excited to, to have the vaccine. We will need to continue social distancing and masking, certainly until the summer. Um, and I'm hopeful. September, I think, to be honest, is optimistic.
I didn't wanna hear that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
There's a, a quick question, uh, and, and I'm, I'm asking this question so that I can add my voice to those who say, um, thank you very much for applying for this position. It's, um, you are yet another example of just the aston- astonishing talent that comes forward for volunteers, volunteer service, excuse me, to the town of Brookline. Um, uh, you, you were a co-author of an article in March, um, that said the US, uh, could be hit harder than other wealthy nations, uh, by COVID. Um, and, uh, I, I just think it'd be a good message for all of us to hear. How did you see that coming, um, in, in early March?
Yeah, I mean, we know that epidemics, um, emerge along lines of, um, discrimination, along lines of inequality. That is just how they play out. We know that from HIV/AIDS. We know that from other diseases that basically people are not, uh, you know, especially contagious diseases. They, they happen when you have deep poverty, deep inequality. You have jobs that are precarious. You have people who are unable, uh, you know, immigration policy under this administration. People are scared to be tested, so scared to, you know, our tool is contact tracing. But if you're scared to report who you were in contact with because you're scared that that person will be deported or they may go to prison or they might be fined and they don't have money. Like basically we knew that our society was, is, is, is broken. And in many ways racial inequities, economic inequities, uh, escalate the risk during a time like this. So when we wrote the piece in March, um, it was maybe dramatic. I'm so sad that it played out the way we were sort of, we were trying to, um, ring an alarm to say, you know, pay attention to equity, pay attention to equity from day one. If you really want to contain this, make sure that communities that are your poorest communities, that have least access to health, you know, healthcare, but also overcrowded housing, um, issues like that need to get infusion of resources of testing just, and that didn't happen. So unfortunately our predictions came out to be true, but I wasn't alone. I think most social epidemiologists would have predicted that. I think we were just putting it out in, yeah, in the Washington Post, uh, to, to sort of raise the alarm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you for appearing for this interview and, uh, we'll be, uh, letting you know, uh, I presume pretty soon, um, of our, uh, our decision.
Thank you so much. I look forward to serve. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, next, uh, Small Business Development Committee. I see that David Gladstone is, um, uh, here. Mr. Gladstone, please introduce yourself to those in the audience who don't know you and tell us why you're particularly interested in this committee and what you'd bring to it.
Thank you. Thank you, select persons and, uh, Town Manager Kleckner for allowing me to interview for this position. Uh, I have had a, a deep involvement with small business for a very long time. When I first started my career, I had eighteen years of retail experience with Jordan Marsh, Sports Authority, Milton's and DSW. Um, and since then I've had eighteen years of experience in the banking industry, mainly in commercial, the commercial sector. I'm looking to get involved with small business because I've always been involved with small business, but I wanted to volunteer with the town because right now, small businesses are under siege. Uh, I have a lot of businesses in my portfolio that I've been helping with regards to deferrals. There's a lot of, of my businesses that have paused due to the pandemic impact. And, uh, we've been able to do some things as a bank, uh, to be able to help them. But certainly, uh, it can't just be done by the banks. It needs to be done by the community, by the state, by the feds and by volunteers. So that's why I'm stepping up.
So, um, I, I think the governor did provide some funding for, uh, to help small business, uh, but, you know, probably not enough. Um, and, you know, the federal government, even under, uh, the new era that we're hoping, uh, we're, we're about to enter is, is gonna be constrained. What, what, what ideas do you have for, uh, support from, uh, the town?
Okay, well.
It's not, it's not the main thing that we need to, uh, be, uh, providing to the small business community, but, you know, it's, it's something.
Yep. I, I think, uh, that we need to continue to do what we've done. I mean, we proposed through the chamber, uh, having the town diminish the fees for liquor licenses and permits. We did that. We cut them in half and we delayed the enforcement of the other half until April. I mean, yes, the $648 million from the Baker administration is gonna be, uh, directed through the Mass growth capital corporation. There is some legislation in committee right now that may help restaurants, uh, that, that Cynthia Cream, Senator Cream has proposed. Um, I, I think that we need to just keep on being able to listen and try to help where we can help. We can't be the, we can't be the silver bullet, but we can certainly try to help where we can provide the assistance.
Any other question?
Um, uh, David, I was excited to see your application. Um, by the way, send goes for Jen Mason who will interview, um, in just a bit. And we've got room on the committee, thankfully for both of you. Um, and in particular, um, you know, your work around, um, climate is everybody's business and getting the business community really going, um, on, on addressing, um, climate issues. Uh, I do think one of the other ways you can be helpful is, is, you know, this is one of those intractable issues. We discussed it, I think, the last time we met as a select board. But, um, the issue of, of rents and, and landlords and, you know, even pre-pandemic, um, small businesses having a tough time basically covering their costs and being able to, to run a business, pay all their employees and still be able to pay the rent. Um, I'm really excited, you know, hopefully in, in our small business, uh, committee meetings to hear you talk a little bit more about this, but if, any thoughts right now about that challenge we're facing and, and how we might work to overcome it?
Yep. Right now in College Corner, I'm on a committee where we're investigating with economic development and with, uh, stakeholders, the ability to be able to possibly create a, uh, a, a business district similar to Downtown Crossing. Uh, we're at the point right now where we're doing some studies. We're out, doing outreach to the landlords. My understanding is that, uh, sixty percent of the real estate and fifty percent of the landlords would have to agree to this and it would be a tax which would be assessed by the town to the, to the, uh, commercial business, uh, to the commercial owners and that tax would be assessed and, and sort of trickle down to, uh, the business owners. But it would create a, uh, a budget to be able to have advertising and beautification and improvements and maybe better signing and clean a, clean, uh, cleaner district, maybe earlier shovelings, trash removal. So there's, there's a lot of different ways that that could impact. But we're, we're certainly looking at, we're at the beginning of that stage. It's gonna take a while to do. But there's a lot of people that are involved in these conversations already roll.
Thanks, David.
Uh, the other point I would make is that I was also involved with the Benefits Parking District in Brookline Village, where, uh, I actually worked with Chris from Transportation early on to, uh, to get that, that ahead of steam. And we were able to roll that out and now I guess a committee is formed and that's off and running as well.
Right. Thank you.
Well, Bernard?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, well, we all mentioned a couple of things that I wanted to comment on, but I will just say to you all that, uh, David has been a member, valuable member of the Climate Action Committee and, uh, always advocating for business interests and always understanding, um, the nexus between business and community. Uh, and, uh, well, he's doing the climate for, is everyone's business through the chamber and, uh, not sponsored by the Climate Action Committee. He's always been, uh, keeping us abreast and soliciting our opinions and, uh, promoting, um, the climate issues in, in the business community. So I think, um, he, uh, certainly brings very valuable skills, uh, to the, the committee. And, um, David, that, and, and he has unbelievable energy. Um, I feel like he's got his hands in many things in Brookline, um, all to the good. So thank you, David, for all your work.
You're welcome. And, and full disclosure, I'll be coming the, uh, president of the chamber in June.
Good. More power. Hey, uh, you know, as, as a banker, um, you wanted to think, one of the problems that we have uh, is, uh, you know, small, uh, small businesses, uh, who rent their space and, you know, are being pushed out by the banks, who are being pressured by, you know, reserve requirements and, you know, other regulations, uh, you know, coming from the federal level. Um, I, I would hope that, um, you know, you, uh, would, uh, come up with some ideas in terms of legislation that we could, uh, push on our, um, you know, senators, two senators, who I'm sure would be very responsive, as well as our new, uh, state representative, I'm sorry, not state representative, US Representative Jake Ottenfloss. Um, you know, there, there, there are a lot of things that could, can be done to make, uh, it easier for, um, you know, people down the chain, you know, from the regulators to the banks to the, uh, renters, um, that, uh, you know, we, we, we should, we should be pushing it. Uh, so that's.
I, I agree with you, Bernard, and I think that one of the big buy-ins we have to get up from the commercial owners. Um, there, there's some of these commercial owners have a New York state of mind on how they treat their renters. Um, and, uh, some of them have been negotiating very well with businesses and some of them haven't. And I've had situations in my portfolio in both regards where, um, businesses are straining and some people have helped and some people haven't. So there's certainly a lot of need out there.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Thank you. Um, like I always say, we'll, we'll be, uh, voting to appoint people to our various committees at a future date and we'll let you know.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You.
Have a great day and thank you for your service.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, uh, next, Jen Mason. Please introduce yourself and, and tell us your interest in, in this committee and what you can bring to it.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to be here. Um, so my name is Jen Mason. I am the owner of Curds &amp; Co., which is, um, across down the street from Town Hall, um, in, um, Brookline Village. And, um, I've been the owner there for a little over three years. And, um, I would love to step up and volunteer to be part of the Small Business Development Committee because it has been very helpful to me, um, and hopefully through me, um, and the information that I gained. It made almost every single meeting because it was just, um, a bright light during COVID. Um, it was a chance to be with other people who were going through the same thing and it was a, a great way to learn more information and then doing what I like to do, which is pass it on to the people that I know need it. So, you know, other Brookline, from other Brookline, um, businesses to other metro Boston businesses. Um, I'm very sort of connected to the food startup, um, um, industry world here in, um, um, metro Boston and have been for about four years. Um, and, uh, particularly in the food, uh, startup industry with minorities, uh, and women-owned businesses. Um, I've been in multiple programs with them as peers. I've been mentors with them. Um, and, um, I, I find just in my general business that my business is only better when I'm working with really smart, great people. So I'm always on the lookout for them and, um, I try not to ask for help from anybody unless I'm willing to give it. So, um, having the ability to be on a committee like this and help, um, make other people's businesses better, makes my community better. Um, you know, very selfishly, it makes my business better, makes my employees happier. So, um, uh, the more I give, the more I get back. So I, I really want to see what I can do. Um, and heck, I was showing up for all the meetings anyways, so I might, well, I might as well, uh, give a hand.
Great. Thank you. So, uh, questions before I jump in?
I'll, I'll ask one and, and then get out of the way.
Okay.
Uh, uh, tha- thank you, uh, Jen, for, um, for your interest and for, and for showing up. I love people who show up for the, the meetings, even if they're not on the committee, uh, because that's what I have been doing a lot of and, uh, I, I like to know that, uh, there's other people who think that that's a, a normal thing to do. That's good. Uh, I, I, I ask for indulgence on this question. It's purely out of curiosity. How's the new business doing, um, the Booksmith, um, uh, business, the catering, uh, of that site?
Yeah, so, um, it's interesting. COVID has definitely dealt us a new blow. Uh, this was a very, very quick project and I think this other reason why I can be valuable on, um, this committee is it's essentially like I opened a second business in Brookline, so three years and what's changed in three years? Um, even though it really is Brookline Booksmith's business, um, and, um, really like the, the, the plan was for us to help them get started and see what happened. And if it did really, really well, um, we might hand it over. And if it was, goes really slow, we might hand it over. And if it's somewhere in between, we might stay on. So we're sort of in the, um, trying to get it all onto their plate while we really figure out what COVID, um, is to a bookstore, um, during this craziness where the staff is super, super cautious and, um, very careful. As Natalia was saying, um, you know, should restaurants be open? Should they not be open? And, um, and I think they're just being very super cautious of, and trying to figure it out. But the, the customers are just, it, it has been so fun to sit there and listen to them as they walk by, as they were doing their holiday shopping. Um, I think when we come out of this and maybe it's September, um, I really hope for magic to happen before then, but, um, that, um, it's really going to be a, a really fun center. And, uh, I, I knew, not that Booksmith wasn't already a destination place, but I can see, you know, author events in there, um, and all sorts of fun stuff. And it's been, it's been, um, a great thing to work with that team. Um, my team really stepped it up this holiday and, um, you know, it was interesting to start a second business in the same town. We also have a, a store in Boston. So I've been through the whole process of opening and doing all the same things, but through Boston. And, um, there are problems and things that can be fixed in both places. I don't feel like I have a voice in Boston, so this is the place to, uh, to see if I can't help out. Um, in a way, when we started our, our first business here and I worked with, um, one of Kara's, um, employees to help, we, we just worked through the whole process while I was opening the business. I met with them and they, they, you know, gave me surveys and they asked me questions and we have meetings and trying to improve the process for bringing new businesses in. And there's just silly things that, you know, part, party A and party B don't know, don't make sense. They don't fit together. So I'm hoping, um, with some of that fresh in my head, I can also help there.
I just wanna say it's, it's, uh, so encouraging to see people trying out, um, new things at this very difficult time. And I do think it's the creative, excuse me, the creativity, um, and the entrepreneurship and the willingness to try out new things that's going to help get our retail areas through this. So, um, you know, so I, I salute you for that and thank you for applying for this committee.
You know, one of the things about the Booksmith, uh, uh, location is that it benefits from the fact It benefits from the fact that people are going through it fairly quickly. Uh, as opposed to a restaurant where you're sitting down and having a, you know, leisurely meal. Uh, that's sort of a, I, I would think that that's sort of a new model for um, I don't know. Food delivery, books, bookstores, et cetera. Um, so I wouldn't, you know, and, and of course you have a number of other new models. Uh, you outdoor eating, um, you know, you, it was always had it, but expanded outdoor eating. Um, out pickup and delivery, you know, we always, always had that, but you know, that's new and expanded. I guess, you know, it'd be interesting to know if, if you have any or can in the future come up with some ideas for new models. That will help get us through this COVID, you know, COVID period, which uh, previous speaker said may last beyond September, which um. Not what I wanted to hear, but you know, what, what, what new, what new models, what new ideas for uh. You know, the restaurant business, you know, can we come up with or other businesses to help us through this, this period?
So I think the biggest thing and, and thankfully it's at the core of our business is sort of the experience. Um, I think people are bored. Silly. I, and you get to the weekend and if you've had a busy weekend and you've been working all day, you're in the house and you're like, oh, let's go out. We can't go out. We, I don't know what we do, you know, and then it's crummy weather. So you're like, I can't even go out for a walk. Um, so I think trying to build experiences around that, um. Not to like list one more business that I own, but I also encourage box.com, which is a cheese and paring subscription box, which kind of lets us scale. Our little tiny brick and mortar here, we're nationwide. So I mean, we will send out 700 monthly boxes in January. Um, and it's all about an experience. Um, it's uh, we put together a podcast and Spotify playlist and there's just things to do. And what I've really felt through all of COVID and, and um, I, it was great to go to the, the regular meetings. But it, it made me feel calm and then it let me pivot and it'll let me really create things. So one of the things we were able to do. And I, I've done some research. I think we were the very first people, we did a nationwide live cheese tasting. Um, we had people, had a hundred and fifty people all over the country. Um, and as I was waiting for the zoom to start, it was everything I could do not to tear up because. You know, a son bought one, a son in Texas bought a box for his mom in Oklahoma and it was just a cheese tasting. We do those all the time. We can do it nine, 10, 12 of those a month before COVID. But this was like, it was, it was just, it brought joy to people. And um, that was a really great gift. If you can bring some happiness to people right now, but it needs to be about experience. Um, I think there's some really great things. Um, the group Cobble works out of the arcade in Coolidge Corner. They are fantastic. We are meeting with them. I was talking with the new. The new people at Brookline Wine and Gourmet, which is not Brookline Wine and Gourmet. They don't have their new sign yet. We're talking about what we can do with them, what we can do virtually, what we can do with just like small pods. So people who live together, you know, like you just have to. You have to not be a victim, which is really hard because it, and you have to feel like, how do we take advantage of this? And how do we, how do we solve a new need? And so we're just spending time looking for the need and hopefully um, we can really help um, people do that. I've been helping um, a company in Metro West Chocolate Therapy, which is um. Women owned, black owned business, friends from my time with minority food businesses, just really a great friend. Um, and they were almost nothing online and the, they had to turn their orders off this, this Christmas. Um, I spent multiple days leaving my three businesses behind and helping them make chocolate. Um, and it's just, it's, it's been fantastic to help people with it. Um, which is best, best feeling.
So, so uh, those are the type of ideas that can get us through this uh, COVID. That we need to encourage uh, more and more. Um, I mean, the, the, mothers of invention, not the rock group. Uh, you know, the process of, of uh, coming up with ideas to solve problems when you throw. Uh, when, when, when a big, big uh, problem is thrown at you like COVID. So, okay. Any, any other questions?
I'm so excited to see you apply and, and Jen's been at our um, virtual town hall meeting since they started back in March and um. Just um, glad to have your voice in this space and, and I think you'll be really helpful to our work going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Happy to be considered.
Okay, good. Okay. So we will um, be voting presumably soon. Um, and uh, you know, let you know uh, shortly. Right. Thank you. Okay, next. Uh, Mr. Kleckner is going to work us through this because we have a transfer of a license, a proposed manager. A pledge of collateral, a common victor license, an entertainment license, an alternate manager and outdoor seating request. Wow. But once we're through that, we're almost through the meeting.
Yeah, it, it's an extensive request, but it is a transfer and um. I, I just wanted to raise a few things and obviously the applicant is here uh, this evening. Uh, there was a little glitch in getting this information to the board, but I want to assure the board that uh. The hearing was duly noted, uh, duly noticed um, as required by law and um, all the departments uh, have reviewed. And I believe the latest uh, from the health department, all of the departmental reports are favorable. What you, what we're dealing with here, other than the pledge of collateral, which uh, you know, I don't, I don't, not sure there was a pledge in prior license, but I, I could be wrong. Is it pretty standard transfer of uh, the existing license, these existing operation, the same name, the same. Uh, you know, seating and, and uh, entertainment and all those things. So. I, I don't think this is one of our more complicated licenses, but I did want to address it because I think there was uh. Some glitch, which I think was an anomaly um, of getting the board all the detailed information on the application.
Uh, same menu?
I'll, I'll ask the applicant to have a response.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it when COVID's over.
Yeah. You're, you're muted. So Mr. Robinoff. Still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening. Um, so I represent the, the applicant and uh. As uh, as Mr. Kleckner uh, stated, uh, essentially seamless uh, a transfer of the existing restaurant operation. Um, my clients, obviously they're uh, certainly not the greatest time to be buying a restaurant in the middle of a pandemic, to say the least. But uh, they have quite a bit of experience in the business. They see this as a unique opportunity. Uh, to acquire uh, you know, a, a going concern like, like the Brothers Restaurant that, that does have a. Uh, have a presence in, in, in Brookline. Um. And they feel very confident that they can uh, they can keep it going and they can certainly uh, make it their own over time and uh. Uh, and make it, make it successful. Um, so, but for the time being, they intend to just keep, keep everything the way it is. Keep the same menu. They may, you know, make some, some, some changes uh, over time, but uh. For the time being, they are essentially can keep it as is and um. And they're, they're hopeful that they can, they can make it work and, and, and keep it going.
Okay. Only thing I have to say is uh, do not take the short ribs tacos off.
All right. I'll make sure my client makes a note of that one. Those sound very good, by the way.
Yeah, they're incredible. Um, Ms. Hamilton, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I had similar requests. Um, which I will uh, shamelessly plug the, they put Nutella, like French toast. Really good.
Good, good.
Like a, there's like a Brookline breakfast bowl that is really good. So that would be really great if I could continue to.
Absolutely.
I will also plug that this is one of the very few venues, I mean, before COVID, that offered live jazz music. And it was really, really enjoyable um, to go and know that I think it was every Sunday evening. If I wanted to listen to live jazz, I knew the spot to go. Um, so I hope that they will, you know. Hopefully when we're allowed to enjoy live music again um, indoors. That they will seriously consider doing that because it really is the only game in town.
Yeah, I think those things all make sense. I think uh, they uh, obviously. Want to keep of, keep all the good things about the restaurant, things that people liked about it and, and expand on those and improve on them. Uh, as, as they go along. So it's, it's great to get this kind of feedback. Because you know, they're coming in uh, without having that past experience, but it's good to know what works. And you know, also what doesn't work as, as they, they move things forward. So we appreciate that.
Ms. Heller?
Uh, so I just wanted to comment that um, this is uh, a restaurant in Brookline that has done a lot, focused a lot on breakfast. And had a, a good following for breakfast. It also has always had a um. I call it a Hispanic focus or Hispanic flair in its food, which I love since I'm, you know, from the area of Tex Mex food. It's where I grew up. Um, and uh, so you know, I, I don't think that there is a similar restaurant in Brookline. I think it's unique in this, in this way. Um, and I hope that that uniqueness will be uh, retained.
Well, my, 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 my clients are Hispanic and so obviously they come from um, Hispanic restaurant backgrounds and they understand. The, the dishes and how to prepare them and, and what people enjoy. And so I'm sure they are going to be fully. Focused on, on doing that and incorporating some more uh, Hispanic dishes into the menu.
Yeah, we have a lot of um, sort of fast food, Mexican and other uh, Hispanic uh, type foods in town. It's the uh. Relatively upscale stuff that, that Brothers did, I think is really unique and, and, and important. Um, you know, along with the jazz uh, on, on, on the weekend, you know, to bring people from not only Brookline. Uh, but also from outside Brookline, you know, and there aren't, there aren't that many, you know, great jazz restaurants. Uh, in the area anymore. Uh, so you know, if, if, as a, if I can give a plug for that. Um, it's a way of bringing in a lot, a lot of people from a lot of areas around uh, the, the metropolitan, the Boston area. So.
Yeah, no, that's, that, that's, that's great to know. I remember in my law school days going to the Tam O Shanter. And that was a great, great live music venue in, in Brookline and uh. Um, you know, I just remember that being just a, a wonderful spot. So live music means a lot to people and definitely is a big attraction. So. Um, so you know, my clients certainly uh, will, will try to uh, keep that going.
Um, stranded.
Sure. And I'll be brief. Um, also a big fan. Um, I actually live very close and, and look forward to, to this um. Uh, reopening in this way. I, I do notice that um, for the outdoor seating. Um, you're applying for, for eight seats there. Um, I'm wondering if, if there's a plan to take advantage of. What we now have, which is sort of expanded outdoor seating, uh, may not be a good option for you all in the winter. I would, I maybe wouldn't start with that in uh, in January, February, but. Um, certainly when the spring comes, um, that's an option and um, you know, whether or not we'll be seeing you again. Um, to, to sort of expand beyond the, the usual seats that, that have been there um, to, to the possibility of maybe using a, a parking spot or two in front to expand seating.
Uh, uh, I think that's absolutely an option um, that we'll be looking at. I think um. We were trying not to, you know, bite off more than we could chew. Uh, with kind of the first set of applications, but. I think as we move, you know, through the winter months and hopefully start working our way through COVID. Um, we will absolutely um, try to take advantage of whatever opportunities the town will allow for outdoor seating. So. Uh, I think my clients need to kind of get, kind of get the lay of the land, so to speak, and understand. Uh, what the different options would be and then, and then I'm sure they, they would uh, be putting, putting forward another application for that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see. How do we uh, want to do each one of these uh, by itself or together? Pardon me?
This is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing. Um, Ms. Fields, uh, is there anyone waiting to speak?
Yes. The first person signed up to speak is Jerome Campler. Jerome, you've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable. I think you might need to just make sure that your audio is hooked up to whatever device you're using. If you click in the bottom left-hand corner. There's a little arrow. You just want to make sure that you're using either a built-in microphone or headphones. So if you are using a, if you're using your laptop or desktop, um, in the bottom left-hand corner, there's an arrow and you can select your microphone. And either choose system or. Headphones and that's the same with your speaker as well. If not, you can always type your question in the, in the Q and A. Or the chat uh, for the group to respond to.
Mr. Campler, why don't you type in the chat box? Come back in, okay. Okay. That, that, that's the uh, nineteen hundreds version of uh, chat box. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get back to you uh, in a little while. Uh, is there anyone else uh, in the um, queue?
At this time, there are eighteen attendees and no one has used the hand raised feature.
Okay.
There is one, uh, looks like we have a couple of people who have raised their hand. Going to promote Howard Wernick. Howard, you've been promoted and when you're ready, you can unmute and share your video. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can.
Hi, my name is Howard Wernick. I am the owner of the property at four oh four Harvard Street, which is the subject property. I just want the board to know that I did my due diligence into the applicant, Mr. Simon Restropo. And I have found him to be a person of high character, high integrity, a good reputation, highly responsible. And I've also found that he has the significant uh, restaurant experience to make this venture successful. So I've also been listening to all of you and I know you have good things to say. Thank you. And I urge the vote, I encourage the board to voting current in favor of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Campler, are you able to, to speak now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hooray, hooray. Just have to change. Uh, so uh, I'm here on behalf of. The ownership of three ninety-eight through four oh two Harvard, which is the butter. Uh, we have a great working relationship with Mr. Wernick, who takes care of his properties and we've had a great reputation with uh. Great uh, situation with uh, the brothers besides eating there too much. Uh, we, I have no, owners have no problems. And uh, we're looking forward to them reopening and we're in favor to give them these hard times of the transfer and encourage you to vote in favor. Thank you. Sorry to take so long.
Oh, no problem. That, that, we all have that problem at one point or another. Thank you. Um, is there anyone else, Ms. Fields?
At this time, there are twenty attendees and no one has used the hand raised feature or Q and A to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, um, any other, I'll close the hearing. Any further comments from the board? Ms. Hamilton?
I'd just like to thank uh, Howard Wernick. Um, I, I kind of wish that other owners would do that kind of due diligence. And participate in the, you know, hearing um to reassure this board that we're we're getting a good one. So, thank you very much for caring that much about this community.
Thank you.
And I'd like to put in a good word for Mr. Wernick as well. He's been very, he's been terrific to deal with. He's very cooperative, working with us. Uh, you know, working through, you know, some of the lease issues and whatnot, but he's a, he's been a great, great supporter and um. We're looking forward to working with him in the future.
Okay, I'd like to uh move uh all of the questions. I'll repeat what they are. Uh, they include application for a transfer of an all alcohol beverages restaurant license. Uh, they include a proposed manager and and the person of Simon Restrepo. Uh, they include a pledge of corrupt collateral. A license application for a license for a common victor. An entertainment license and we see the butters, uh, at least one of the butters is supportive. And I don't believe that there are a lot of other residential properties around there. Um, I may be wrong, but that's my understanding. Uh, a application for alternate manager and an application for outdoor seating for eight seats. Uh, all of these transferring um from SLH Restaurants LLC doing business as Brothers Restaurant. At four four Harvard Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. Actually, that's uh the uh um transferee. Um, the transferor is who?
Uh, the Brothers Restaurant Corporation.
Okay, okay, good. Anyway, um, all in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And cheer of both side. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much to the board. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, uh, we have a Brookline Housing Authority discussion. Um, I guess I'd like Mr. Fernandez to explain, you know, what it is that we're we're discussing here. There is a proposed, it looks like um. Uh, committee. Uh, we're of course not in a position of voting that, uh, but I also think we need to discuss, you know. What what the purpose of this would be and and, you know, what the current situation is with the town's relationship to the uh Brookline. Housing Authority, et cetera. So why don't you just start off and um is the uh is Mr. Alperin of the Housing Authority? Um, on on the line here?
I see him here as well as Michael Jacobs, who's the chair of the um, the board of the Brookline Housing Authority. It'd be helpful to have them involved too. Um, so yeah, I'll tee this up. You know, this is, I think, an initial discussion. Um, about really deepening our relationship with the Brookline Housing Authority. Obviously. Town of Brookline has been engaged with the Housing Authority um for a very long time uh on any number of issues, um including. Uh, sort of uh support for certain capital projects, but also uh even more recently thinking about our support for um for residents in need. Um, you know, utilizing CDBG funding, for instance, those community development block grants, um, our support. You know, for residents, including through our support for the um the Brookline Community Foundation, the Brookline Center for Mental Health and others, Food Pantry and others. Uh, and so really, you know, what strikes me about our community is that um. Uh, sort of public housing, if you look at the map also, um, tends to be sort of on the edges of our community. And it's really easy for members of our community um to um to sort of not realize and not know much about um Brookline. Uh, public housing. Uh, you know, it strikes me that as it relates to public housing, that there are many residents, but also folks in leadership. Um, that lack a real meaningful understanding of the purpose, the operation, the funding mechanisms, and most importantly, the needs of residents in public housing. Um, and so I think there's a real opportunity and even a responsibility for us as a community with relative abundance. To engage BHA leadership in meeting some of those critical needs, but also investing in the long-term success of residents. Um, in public housing. Uh, and so, of course, there are no shortage of challenges to doing that, financial obstacles. Um, being the most notable challenges, particularly right now. Um, but, you know. What this proposes is us to come together, um, to bring stakeholders together, to face those challenges, to better understand those challenges. And to work together to try to overcome them, which is probably the only way we're gonna actually do it. And I don't mean just the immediate needs. Of folks right now, but really thinking in the long term. Um, so what you'll see here is a proposed partnership. And again, this is the early stages of this. So, um, this is, um, this welcomes your input. This welcomes your edits. This welcomes, um, you know, uh. The input and edits of 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 Michael and Michael, uh, as well as other folks too. Uh, but really is about. More formally bringing stakeholders together to understand and meet the needs of Brookline's Housing Authority. And a critical focus in investing in the long-term wellness and prosperity of residents. Um, and then, you know, hey. I won't go through all the list of folks that are included here, uh, but needless to say, um, representatives from select board, from BHA leadership. Um, you know, Mr. Klechner as well, BHA residents, um, including from family properties and senior properties. Um, some of the social service agencies that um that support residents in in public housing and elsewhere. Uh, and also importantly, um, the directors of redevelopment and maintenance uh for the BHA as well. As the executive director for elderly service coordination um eh for the BHA. Um, to really come together and better understand these issues. Um, this current version posits quarterly meetings, so four times a year, at least to get us started. Um, with meetings alternating between focusing on resident services and also capital needs. Um, so we're addressing both of those. Um, so that's what I've shared with you to this point, uh, and just wanted to get us started on a conversation about. Um, what you think about this, uh, what something like this might look like. And again, um, comments, edits, et cetera, are welcome.
I guess I'd like to start off by saying that I always thought um that the town and the Housing Authority worked fairly well together. Um, you know, we we provided resources to the extent that we could and and other uh forms of help. So I guess my question is, and maybe this is really directed to uh Mr. Jacobs, since he's been around. A while and also Mr. Alperin, who hasn't been around that long, but I'm sure he's up to speed. Is, you know, you know, what, you know, what uh, what needs are uh, does the Housing Authority have that aren't being met? By the current uh way in which the town uh works with the Housing Authority?
Uh, well, uh, thanks, Bernard. Uh, I I think um, we have, we've had a great partnership. Um, but the Housing Authority has many, many needs, and I think the last two town meetings recognized. Uh, that all of our needs aren't being met. And I think one of the things that, to me. Uh, you know, made me realize was um. Having some conversations, uh, not just at the last second at town meeting, but on an ongoing basis, I thought. I think would be very, very useful. And I think Raul's suggestion about coordination. Uh, with a group of folks, both on the resident service side, on the capital needs, would allow us to explore that and not simply at the eleventh hour. Uh, be faced with discussions on one foot. So to me, that is really the most valuable. Issue that I think Raul is raising. Uh, it's, uh, you know, you know, we have, all of our needs are not being met. Uh, and that has nothing to do with that, with the town of Brookline not being a tremendous partner. But uh, as we've discussed, you know, the federal government and the state government don't meet all of our needs. The pandemic has obviously made that issue even worse. And this is a way to work even in greater coordination to try to address those needs, both in the short and the long term. I don't know if Michael would like to add anything more.
No, I think that was well put, uh, Michael.
I'd like to hear what other board members think, but it seems to me that another um committee. You know, I I I'm not convinced that, you know, that's needed. And, yeah, I'm kind of surprised to hear that. The way that we uh, you know, the Housing Authority works with uh, with the town, particularly through uh the town administrator, which. My understanding was, you know, was work was going fairly well. Um, and, you know, the other ways aren't meeting. Um, you know, your needs. I mean, what what, okay, that's just me. Uh, what do other people think? Ms. Heller?
Um, well, I believe that the Housing Authority um. And its programs are basically creations of the federal government funneling money through the state government. And that Brookline has not had much of a role in that. And in because the federal government has failed so miserably. Um, in the housing arena, as well as many others. You know, we've needed to step into the breach. I'm hopeful that in the future. Um, looking forward to a new administration, administration who I think is committed to um, understanding the needs of. Um, people who have very, very little and who need much. That there will be more resources available. Um, and that um. That's how it should be and it hasn't unfortunately for quite some time, I think, with the kinds of conservative. Administrations and a lock on on the Senate and a lock on the House, but at federal level. So, I don't know whether you think, Mike, that there are other things uh you could be doing or. Maybe other avenues that are available to you in terms of resources from uh. Granters, grant makers and and others that could also help out the situation.
I would just um echo what you said, Nancy, uh, but also add that. Um, the state of Massachusetts has also chronically underfunded its state public housing portfolio, so there's a state-based issue as well. Um, the town has been a tremendous partner. Mel and I speak regularly and and just want to emphasize that to everyone on this call. I think what Raul is raising is can we do more in partnership than working in silos? Um, the Housing Authority has voucher resources that might let us create additional affordable housing in town. The. Uh, the town has existing relationships with the Housing Authority that are not immediately obvious on its face. I just went through a lengthy presentation with the advisory committee about all the ways our budgets are intertwined, and I think it was illuminating for some advisory committee members. Um, there's pilot agreements, there's payments that are involved with certain town departments, um, but all of that. Um, is a potential source that could unlock value for our residents, whether that's services, improved kitchens and bathrooms. I think if any of you toured um our apartments, you would see that they largely haven't been touched. The, you know, in in terms of building envelopes since the nineteen seventies and that's well past the useful life for many building systems. And I just think it's something we as a town um may want to go above and beyond to be proud of our public housing stock and the. Resources that we provide residents um from lesser means. And so, um, I think that's the framework Raul's trying to create. I'm open-minded about it. I've been on many committees that without a clear charge devolve into not much progress, but I. I I certainly am a believer that the town and the Housing Authority could do more, working together regularly. In formal frameworks um than in silos.
This is Ms. Hamilton.
I'm I'm not opposed to the the establishment of of a committee that would meet quarterly. I I don't think that's a a heavy lift. Um, and it has potential um really good benefits. Um, I think what we're seeing with a lot of the warrant articles that have to do with housing and especially the Housing Authority. Is that there there is this need and nobody quite knows the avenue to go through. So I'm hoping that. Instead of like these little bubbles kind of shooting out from a balloon, you know, every time you kind of poke it, it shoots out somewhere else. We can kind of direct that energy. Maybe to this committee.
So I want to say a few things. I I did hear uh witness uh Michael Alpern's presentation to the advisory committee. And it it was very uh illuminating for a lot of people. And and I think. Uh, my colleague, Mr. Fernandez's introduction of this topic um uh was quite on point. There, for whatever reason, um, over the years, uh, Brookline's sort of generalized. Understanding of the role that the Housing Authority plays in the town. And the appreciation of the Housing Authority's role in in providing affordable housing in the town. And also the knowledge of the needs of the Housing Authority has diminished. Um, it hasn't been as much a topic of conversation as it was, say, twenty or thirty years ago. The momentum behind public housing um uh sort of peaked um and and then slid. Um, and um, people stopped looking to public housing in the way that they had previously as the answer. For the problem of the need for affordable housing. And I think maybe we're on on the verge of of a change um uh back to a much more positive direction. Um, I'm just gonna cite one thing that has been in the news uh recently, and I'm sure people are gonna be hearing more about it. Um, no, no less a a person than Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez has um. Backed something that is sort of a Green New Deal for public housing. Um, and it's very visionary, um, it's very um ambitious. Um, and yet it, uh, which, you know, might might say to some people, well, then it's probably unrealistic, but in fact. Um, depending on how things turn out tonight in Georgia, perhaps. Um, we we could be on the verge of a major initiative under the Biden administration. To turn America's focus back to the opportunity to expand affordable housing through public housing. And if that takes place, and I'm gonna cite one number just to sort of uh make the point here. Um, a report came out as a result of the um initiative taken by Bernie Sanders and and. Um, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez um that said that um, we could, we could perhaps see as many as twelve million. Public housing units by twenty thirty. Um, and part of the initiative would be retrofitting. The existing public housing stock to be carbon neutral. Those are the kinds of ambitious goals that people are discussing right now um in Congress and at the national level. And without sounding too blatantly opportunistic about it. Um, I think if there's a, if there's the possibility here for Brookline to be part of. Um, one of the beneficiaries of this uh, this possible uh new initiative in the direction of expanding. The number of pa- public housing units um across the country. Um, if if that, if that possibility exists, if that potential exists, we should be exploring it right now. And I think this committee. Would be a good way to so explore it and it would be a good way to position ourselves to take advantage of it. So. I think there's a lot of good that could come from um this notion of uh reviving. The uh, the re- the regular discussions that um perhaps used to be more frequent. As to mutual opportunities between the town and the Brookline Public Housing Authority.
Any further discussion?
I'll just, I'll just offer um just one more thing. Um, maybe it's an anecdote, maybe it's more than that. Um, but, you know, um, after I was elected, one of, you know, I I got to know um uh Michael Alpern's predecessor, Patrick Dover, a little bit and spent some time with him. You know, he gives, I I know John's done this too. He gives the tour of uh of public housing, but then we started sort of, you know, I started asking him for data. And looking more into what was there and including um trying to learn more about the Section Eight program, which is something. Um, I wasn't very familiar with in terms of at least the operational side of Section Eight. Um, when we looked at the data, you know, I was surprised to see that um there were at the time only um thirteen. Um, that Section Eight vouchers being used, utilized in Brookline. Uh, and what we did is try to understand why more people weren't utilizing Section Eight vouchers in Brookline. Well, you guessed it, it the the. The value of the voucher was nowhere near the cost of rent in Brookline. And so, um, so much so that I'm curious how those thirteen people even figured out how to do it. Uh, and so what we did was, we partnered together, um, brought in Carlos Hernandez, who's who's at BHA and um and and works on the Section Eight program. And we're able to um to figure out a path forward, which was to work with HUD, HUD under the Trump administration. Um, to apply for and receive a small area fair market rent designation, which actually lifted the value of the Section Eight vouchers. So that it does cover, in fact, it gets a hundred and ten percent of of the um. in fact, that it gets 110% of, of the, the cost of average rent in Brookline. Unlocking the possibility that people with a Section 8 voucher anywhere in the Commonwealth could choose to live in Brookline if that's something they wanted to do. The, and, and we'll see, now we're in a position of a pandemic. We'll see what benefits that, that has later on after people are, are moving again and those kinds of things. But I, I share that as an example of, you know, when we, when we put different minds together and even look at some data that either has been there or, or is there now. You know, folks from a different perspective might ask a different question about the data. That actually sends us down a path where we end up solving a problem that maybe was there, but wasn't necessarily, you know, up on our priority list. But, you know, when we think about public housing, I'd encourage people to think not just about the housing that exists, you know, the, the, the sort of the units we have there. But I was really excited when Michael Alperin started talking about the possibility of expansion of, of subsidized housing within Brookline to make Brookline more affordable for more people who need it, not just in existing units, but in different ways too. So I think those are conversations where, where it's beneficial. And, and I, I, I just want to make sure that this is clear as, as, as Michael made clear and Michael made clear, as well as that, you know, I, I think, I've talked to Mel about this. And I think the, the, I, I, I think the work between the town and BHA has been really fruitful and beneficial. I think with, with this approach, we could even take that to another level and bring in all those other folks, as, as Heather said, as, and as others said, who are bringing proposals forth to town meeting to actually have those proposals go, you know, maybe even to this partnership or to learn more about especially some of the challenges that there are in terms of unlocking dollars, but, but as well as the potential opportunities to partner together to solve some of these problems. And I, and I want to reiterate, it's, it's, we have some right now problems. But what I, where I'd love to get us to is a place where we're thinking about the long-term future of the properties for sure, but also the people within them. And how we help those folks to build generational wealth, maybe start businesses. You know, making sure that, that they're getting the best out of the educational opportunities that we have here in Brookline and the like. So I, I think, but this is just to get us started. An opportunity to say, where are we right now? Let's make sure that we all understand how public housing works, how Section 8 works. And, and to really start to prioritize where we should focus our efforts now, even as we think in the long term. Can I just make one other comment, Bernard? I just want this board to be, it, it can often feel like this conversation delves into how can the town help the Housing Authority? Just want this board to be aware, in our redevelopment efforts to date, if you look at the three most recent pro formas we've had, we're leveraging somewhere between $1 to $6 of town dollars into $44 to $50 of federal, state, and private dollars coming into the redevelopment effort. So we're sort of getting for every $1 of town dollars, somewhere between $44 to $50 of benefit from state, federal, and private sources. And so there are some really powerful redevelopment programs out there. And I just don't want this to feel like the conversation is how can the town only do more? We certainly are looking to every avenue to improve the quality of our public housing, the services we regularly provide, and ultimately improve the lives of our residents currently and many generations into the future.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, thank you.
Bernard, what's the, what's the best, best path forward here? I'd like select board members to have an opportunity to think about this, provide, you know, maybe, you know, any thoughts on the membership, on, you know, anything else they'd like to, what do you think's the best path forward here?
Well, we have an open meeting issue. Why don't we set up a Google Docs document that select board members can go to and make comments on? And, you know, suggest their ideas that way. As a way of getting around open meeting law legally.
Sounds great. And I'm, I'm assuming at some point we would also have revisit this on the board. Public would, would be able to comment.
Yeah.
Great.
So you'll set up the Google Docs, because I don't know how to do that.
I'll work with Devin on that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have annual town meeting elect and election. Question of setting the dates for the 2021 annual town meeting and town election. I guess everyone has looked at the proposed schedule there. Who's gonna talk about that?
I'm counting on Melissa Goff. But, you know, I do know that, you know, this is a process that's bound by our bylaws. But we also try to take into consideration holidays, religious holidays. And we confer, of course, with the town clerk and the town moderator. So Melissa.
Good evening. What you have in front of you is a proposed schedule for town meeting and the town election date. I shared this with the moderator and the town clerk. Obviously, we need their attendance in order to help run town meeting. And the town moderator did post these proposed dates on the town meeting listserv. Where the initial schedule identified a holiday that we need to work around at the end of May. So the proposed schedule that we have here calls for town meeting on May 19th, which is a Wednesday. Normally, we would be starting on the 18th. But the holiday ends on sundown on the 18th. So we would look to do the 19th and 20th, Wednesday, Thursday, and then go into our normal Tuesday, Thursday pattern for the following week. The board also has the option if they would like to start on the 25th, and then that would carry us into June. The schedule that you have in front of you, the goal is to try and wrap up everything before Memorial Day, which I believe is the 31st this year. And then based on those votes and then just kind of counting backwards from the requirements for all the notices that we need to do, that would mean we would have a warrant that would be opening on February 4th and then closing on March 4th.
Hey. Any questions or comments? You know, I don't know why we need to get it done by Memorial Day since we're not supposed to be going out and doing super spreader events. That's just my thought. I, I don't know, I, I. What, what do other people think? Start early or start later? Ms. Hamilton?
I mean, I, I guess we, we have to wrap our heads around that we'll, we'll be doing a virtual town meeting again.
Yeah.
So, you know, I guess earlier is better than later.
But if you're on the beach, you can attend town meeting from your beach chair.
We also know that this past town meeting lasted longer than a normal town meeting. So there is the likelihood that we'll need that week in June anyway.
Okay. So I move approval of the earlier town meeting schedule. Is that what you want, Melissa?
Yep. And then we also, the schedule also calls for the town election to be on Tuesday, May 4th, which I did check in with Linda just to make sure that, what date she preferred, and that is their preferred date for the office.
So I move that we approve the town meeting schedule with a starting date of May 15th, uh, May 18th, right?
Yes.
And the town election date of May 4th.
Excuse me, Melissa, I thought you said that the date starting would be May 19th.
I'm sorry, yes, that's right, Wednesday, the 19th. Sorry. Thank, thank you, Nancy.
Okay, so I move that my motion be amended to start at May 19. I'll repeat the whole thing if you want. I'm more of approval of the schedule that has town meetings starting on May 19. And, you know, the other segments of the schedule and that has the town election held, to be held on Tuesday, May 4. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last item is board and commissions appointments. We have just one appointment, that's to the MLK Celebration Committee, and it's Christiana Aiken, who we talked to last week. Anyone have any questions about that? Okay, I guess all in favor of Christiana Aiken. Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And that is the end of our meeting, unless anyone has anything else. 9:14, that's not bad. Okay, meeting hereby is ended.
Thanks, everybody.